It must be 7:30. We're still waiting for Mike, right?
Yes, I don't see him in the...
Yeah, he's not here yet.
I mean, on the good side, besides back then doing Tech Park West, we had Christopher Follers School. I did Rita Miller and I did the Stony Brook Middle School during that term.
I just sent Mike a text. If you respond. You want to start and do some of the do open forum and then maybe some of the discussion items while we wait for them? Nope.
I ain't going to join on the phone.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I'm here. I can hear you.
I was wondering if we wanted to start and do open forum and maybe do some of the later general business. No?
Hey, guys. Sorry I'm late.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Can you hear Kate? Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Darren, you ready to go?
Not a good sign. Darren, you ready?
I don't know if he can hear us.
He can't. I'm instant messaging him now. I'm having him check to see if his if his speaker output is set for his laptop speakers or headphones instead of sometimes mine defaults to dock. All right.
Sorry, guys. Different device. I'm trying to figure out the volume.
Oh, he can hear you.
Sounds good.
Does Darren want to try calling in by phone using the computer, using that audio?
Kate, do you want to start in the meantime? Is that helpful?
Yeah, yeah, I'll start.
Unless, I don't know if Darren can hear us or not.
Darren can't hear us.
Darren can't hear us. Okay.
I think we're gonna hear him, but he can't hear us. I've asked him to try his phone for audio and keep the video open.
Okay.
So, do you want me to start again? Is that the sense that I'm getting?
Well, wouldn't it be kind of important for Darren to hear?
Yeah, I wasn't understanding the not hearing part.
Yeah.
He's trying to call, I think.
And it looks like Mike is offline. Mike, are you there? Mike Bonifant? Hmm.
It's been on such a good work, too.
I know. It says he's unmuted.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll see what happens with me. We have a new router. Be interesting to see if it messes up.
Kate, I don't have Mike Bonifant's number. Do you want to text him again and just see if he's see what he's up to?
Sure.
Please enter your audio PIN, followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, jump.
Darren, we can hear you now. We got background sounds. I heard his computer dying down.
There you go. The gang's all here.
Time to go unmute.
Be back.
Hi Darren.
You're actually working now, Darren. If we can hear you.
All right. I'll be back.
So Darren, you're actually okay now. We can hear you. We can see you. If you can hear us.
You guys, go ahead. I'll figure this thing out and I'll be back.
Okay.
Kate?
You're muted, Kate.
I called the planning board meeting of July 6th to order. This is a meeting via webinar. So there's a I know you sent me something to read. Oh, good. You can read it. Let's see. I had just called it to order. Darren, can you hear to take over? Called the order to meet, to the meeting of the planning board for Monday, July 6, 2020. Couple of housekeeping comments. Go-to webinar. The meeting is being recorded by Westford Cat. We respectfully ask that everyone mute their computer microphones and phones when they are not in use in order to avoid unnecessary noise during the meeting, especially feedback. This is an open meeting, so for all the panelists who have access to chat panel, we want to remind you to not use that function to discuss any of the content of the meeting, but solely to ask a question or to talk about any technical issues with a video conferencing platform. And please direct them to the organizers. Because this is a web-based meeting, all votes will be done by roll call. All attendees are muted upon arrival into the meeting platform to reduce unnecessary sounds from disrupting the meeting. If an attendee who is not a panelist wishes to contribute a question or comment, they virtually raise your hand via the platform's control panel and the chair will recognize and unmute that participant so they can voice their concerns, similar to approaching the microphone at a live meeting. Or individuals may submit questions and comments to the chair and staff by utilizing the questions function on the control panel. These will be compiled and included into the hearing at the appropriate time. Due to limitations of the platform, attendees that are accessing the meeting via the telephone number at the bottom of the agenda will only be able to listen to the proceedings and will not be able to contribute. Please access the video conference via the link on the agenda, even if you do not have a webcam, to participate. And that way you can participate by your phone. Attending the meeting tonight, we have all five members. Our chair, Darren Wicks, is having some problems with his audio. So we will find out how that goes for him. We have Bob Schaffer, our newest member. Welcome.
Welcome, Bob.
Kate Hollis, Dylan O'Connor, and Michael Bonifant. And Rebecca. Our first item is open forum. Does staff have anything for open forum?
Yes, Kate. This is Jeff Morissette. I know Darren wanted to say a few words, but I personally would like to start by thanking Gary Lavelle for his service on the planning board. As you all know, it's not exactly an easy board to volunteer for. It's often thankless. You have horrible staff nagging you all the time that you're exceeding your authority, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a lot of hours, not a lot of thanks, and I appreciate anyone's time on this board. So I just want to say thank you to Gary for his time here.
Yeah, and he the nice thing about our board is we're usually a good eclectic mix of people, bringing different viewpoints. And the nice thing about Gary was that he did bring in the business community perspective. So I hope we will all remember all the comments that he had in there, just print. How about anybody else? Engineering?
Nothing from engineering. Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
How are the road work, how's the road work going?
Excellent. Well, of course, anyone who's traveled through Dunstable Road intersection sees that that's now, you know, complete with some little tiny details that we're gonna address in the fall with landscaping and things like that. But our paving management program is underway as well, so we're all looking forward to a busy summer.
Okay.
Hey, Kate, this is Jeff again. I didn't know if it might be appropriate. I know Mr. Schaffer would like to just quickly introduce himself to folks in case they're not familiar with him as our new member.
Sure. Go for it, Bob.
Thanks. This is my second term on the planning board. I served a term, actually the same seat, back in 2000 to 2005. I have served on the Route 110 Master Plan back in that same period of time, I think, beginning in 98, as well as the Master Plan Implementation Committee helped to rewrite the zoning bylaws and write many of the key zoning bylaws that are still in the books, flex development, mill reuse, senior residential. I also served as the initial chair of the CPC for two or three years. And I served on the historical commission and served as its chair for a year and a half. And I also served on the Stupinski Land Acquisition Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody else on the board have anything for open forum? If not, is there anybody in the audience want to wave a hand and say something? Rebecca, nothing from the audience?
I don't see anything, Kate.
Okay, for people who are interested in 65 Powers Road, that's number three on our agenda. Yeah, I just want to say the applicant has requested to continue to the August 3, 2020 meeting. So while we wait, is Darren able to talk yet? Or here, or whatever?
No, he's rebooting his computer again and trying to log in a different way, Kate. So I don't know if you want to take up 65 Powers Road now?
Yes, I was going to. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing for 65 Powers Road? Somebody want to take a crack at it? Dylan? You're on mute.
Sorry. Yeah, no problem. Yeah, I'll move that we continue PB, item 2021, a site plan review for 65 Powers Road. Applicant is Bergeron Machine to the August 3, 2020 meeting, presumably via webinar at 7:30.
Second? All in favor? Bob? Yeah. You're muted.
I am abstaining on this one. Recuse myself.
Okay. Dylan?
Hi.
Mike?
Aye.
Kate is aye, and Darren is still indisposed. So I, to wait for him for our public hearings. I would like to go to general business. I want to hold off on the first two. Let's go to number C, which is 17 Milo Road, also known as Cricket Lane. They have requested to establish a covenant pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U, and also requested endorsement of the final subdivision plans. So for those in the audience, when there is a subdivision, there has to be some kind of a surety or a guarantee so that in case something happens, there is a way to get the work done that needs to be done. The way we usually do it is through a bond, but another way to do that is through a covenant. And this applicant has decided that he wishes to go the route of a covenant, which means that a covenant will be registered with the Registry of Deeds and that they, it's a promise that they will do all the required work that is needed before they will get any building permits. So we have this now. It's in our packets. It is page, in our amendment packet. What page is it?
139? 139.
139. Thank you. So is the, does the applicant here and want to say anything?
Kate, this is Jeff Morissette. I did speak with attorney Melissa Robbins tonight. She's not able to attend tonight due to a conflict. I do want to point out, though, that this is standard language that's part of the appendices to your own subdivision rules and regulations. And so as you indicated, they can't get a building permit or convey the lots until they've completed the work or filed some other form of security, so.
Okay. I did notice that they said Form F and it's really Form E is the covenant form. So I don't know if that's just a minor modification.
It doesn't matter. There is, there is an inconsistency between the numbering of our appendices and the version that we have in Word files, but it's not substantive and it's immaterial. What matters is the language and whether or not it's executed.
Okay, and I'm assuming that they do not have any mortgage on the parcel because if they did, that that would have to be part of the covenant?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Dylan, do you have any questions?
I didn't. It looked pretty straightforward to me. I didn't have any questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Bob?
My only question is to town staff if we've done any due diligence to confirm there's no mortgages, liens, or other instruments placed on this property.
This is Jeff again. So I have not done any form of title research on this, but if this covenant is executed and recorded at the registry, that is proper notice for anyone looking to buy and anyone doing due diligence would not be, would know that they can't even get so much as a building permit on those lots. And that's the purpose.
Okay.
Sure. This is just a discussion item. I don't know if there is anybody in the audience who wants to say anything. Do we know, does somebody want to make a motion regarding the covenant? Dylan? You did so well.
Yeah, I mean, sure. What form do we want this to take, Jeff? Do, normally we just sign this, right? Do we also have to vote on this?
I would respectfully suggest that the board take a vote to execute the covenant in your packet.
Okay.
And then you can come in and sign at, you know, whatever time is convenient for you.
Great. Okay, then I will move that this board accept the covenant, which is either Form F or Form E in our packets for PB 2010, the definitive subdivision of Cricket Lane, 17 Milo Road. Is that sufficient, Jeff?
Yes.
I'll second, second.
Okay. I do have one question, Jeff. Since it does have to be signed by the planning board, this is one of those things because we're doing it, we're are you going to have it available at Town Hall or is this where we're going to do that thing that we agreed to way back in March or April about having a designate, sign it?
Okay, unfortunately, that was very specific authorization and it was in the context of signing plans, whether A and R, et cetera. It was not for covenants such as this. So I would ask for a majority of the board to sign this and we can make it available at Town Hall. If you would like us to leave it in the lockbox, whatever arrangements you folks want to make, we're happy to make it happen for you.
Okay. Would people prefer to have it in the lockbox in the police station or go into Town Hall?
I'll go in to sign it. I don't have an issue with that.
Yeah, I will as well. I have to, I have to stop in this week or next week anyway.
Which is that we have plans to endorse also, and I don't think they're going to fit in the lockbox. So if you want to do those things at once, it would be easier if you came up to the office.
Eight to four. Okay. So we do have a motion and a second, so all in favor of accepting the covenant. Dylan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate, aye. I assume that Darren is still working his way in. I don't see him with audio at least. So you want it, there's a request for endorsement of final subdivision plan. They were not in the packet, but do we need to review them or just vote on them?
So, yeah, Rebecca.
I think you can just vote on them. We had a couple of things that were outstanding that were part of the decision prior to plan endorsement, which we have received. And the applicant has agreed that we will release the endorsed plans once we have proof that the covenant has been recorded. So those two things will be tied together.
Okay, so we'll vote on them, then we'll go to sign them at the same time that we sign the covenant?
Correct. And then the applicant will take the covenant to be recorded and when we have proof that it's been recorded, we'll hand over the plans.
Okay. Any questions from the board on that process? Is there a motion to endorse the final subdivision plan?
I moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? None? All in favor?
I have one question to Jeff. Since I did not vote on this in, I think it was May, I'm assuming I should recuse myself from this aspect.
It's not necessary because we're outside of the public hearing, but if you don't feel comfortable voting on it, we only need three votes anyhow.
That's fine. Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Dylan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate, aye. Thank you. So Town Hall. The Darren? How's it going? Darren isn't chiming in yet, so we will continue. Let's do number D, proposed zoning bylaw amendment. This is the discussion just for the zoning bylaw amendments that were previously sponsored by the Board for Consideration in the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. But because of the rescheduling of the town meeting and the format for it, we were requested to postpone these to the fall town meeting, special town meeting, which we did. So is the board still agreeable, amenable to putting these on for the special town meeting in the fall? Or Jeff, do you have any comments? Jeff or Rebecca?
No, just, as you may recall, Kate, the general laws state that when you hold your public hearing on a zoning bylaw amendment, if town meeting doesn't act on that within six months of your public hearing, you essentially have to redo that process and hold a new public hearing. So that's why we're in this boat and we're just asking if you're willing to continue to sponsor these at the upcoming town meeting.
So if we said yes, and then you would have to do a new public public notice?
That's correct.
Okay.
I see Darren.
Darren? Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Yay!
Yay!
All right, good.
We're on, we're on general business item D, the zoning bylaw amendment that we had first put forth in March, for March. But because it'll be more than six months, staff just want planning board approval to go through the process again and publish a new uh, planning board approval to go through the process again and publish a new public notice in the paper and then hold a new public hearing. Do we need to close the old public hearing?
You already did, Kate.
Okay, already, thanks. So any discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion? Or to direct staff to um or to put these most, these zoning bylaw amendments forward for the um all official town meeting? And to publicly notice them, or whatever the word is.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Dylan?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Eight, aye. So with that, Darren, I now send the board back to the, or the floor back to the chair.
All right. We've already gone through all, yeah. Where are we?
No, we've only got, we've gone through C and D, and we also continued item three for sixty-five Powers Road.
Oh, good, okay. Excellent. All right, so you went through open forum and all that stuff. Thank you, and welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
And I wanted to thank Gary as well and, you know, recognize his contributions over the last couple of years as well, so. Thank you. Um, all right, good. So we're on the first public hearing item then, which is PB twenty-seventeen. And uh, I apologize for the technical difficulties. This is my third device that I've finally been able to connect, so this is bizarre. Uh, so PB twenty-seventeen is St. Augustine Drive. Um. And we're continuing this from our June fifteenth meeting, so uh I'll turn it over to staff for a quick update on this one.
Uh, sure. This is Rebecca. Um, so we have created a draft decision for you to review. Um, and it's a decision to upgrade a portion of the existing St. Augustine Drive, which was um, or is currently a minor way, um, and it's proposed to become a secondary street, and that's to accommodate the connection to the newly approved um Spalding Hill State subdivision. So we have had some back and forth with the applicant about some um items in the decision. You should have gotten the latest this afternoon um with only some minor changes um from what was in the packet. And there have been, or there are a handful of waiver requests in the decision, two of which you've already voted on. The first was a landscape uh reduction in landscape requirements, and the second was the fifteen percent um surety retainer releasing, releasing that in its entirety. Um, and so there is one, there are a handful of waivers for you to review, but in um one of them, we asked that um, the board consider whether they'd like to require a contribution to the sidewalk gift fund. The applicant has requested a waiver to, to construct just one sidewalk, whereas two is, two are required. Um, so the question is, would you like them to um make a contribution? So um with that, I will answer any questions or?
All right, cool. So that's, uh, well, when these guys came before us in the first place, you know, um years ago, they, they actually uh had a similar waiver for sidewalks, correct? And didn't they contribute to the sidewalk fund at that time?
They did. My information has them having contributed twelve thousand dollars previously. That was in two thousand two, I want to say.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I'm, I'm comfortable with it. We, we talked about it pretty extensively last meeting, and I did review the uh the uh, the draft decision. So I'll turn it over to the board. See anybody has any comments or questions? Dylan?
I didn't. I looked through it. It, it seemed consistent with all of our discussions uh for what it's worth. I think, you know, having them contribute some to the, to the sidewalk fund makes sense.
At this time around?
It, it, it is a significant expansion of the development, although I guess this is just in the context of Spalding Hill. I mean, or St. Augustine, sorry. Uh. I mean, we, yeah, they're contributing in the uh, in the Spalding Hill development decision.
Right.
I don't know.
That'll be my, that's my understanding. And Rebecca from uh, for St. Augustine Drive, when they come back, are they, are they putting a sidewalk in on one side of that as part of the uh improvement when, when Spalding Hill goes in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Darren. I was.
Yep, good, good. Yep. All right, Dylan, is that helpful?
Yeah, and I do, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, um, I know Jeff and I spoke with Lou Levine, who's the lawyer for this um application, and he had said that he thought he was going to be late today. I didn't think he was going to be quite this late, but I'm not seeing him here. So I know you are, have already, you're already underway, but I don't know if Jeff has any more information about.
Probably about eight minutes out, so I don't know if you want.
I'm assuming the applicant, it doesn't want to contribute to the, to the sidewalk fund additionally for this.
That's correct.
For first St. Augustine, yeah.
Well, so their sidewalk going down St. Augustine will connect to the sidewalk that Mass DOT just built and down to a flashing beacon and a crosswalk over to the Mario's Dunkin' Donuts Plaza.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything additional on that one, Dylan?
Nope.
Okay, Kate?
Because I'm talking on mute. I'm, I'm confused about this. Have they or have they not already put some, some money into the sidewalks fund for this portion of St. Augustine Drive?
They already have, Kate, but that was with their original subdivision approval. So this, this was already approved as a subdivision. What you have before you is a modification to that original subdivision. Because they're changing some of the, some of the um, the qualities of the road, they're asking for, they're asking for some waivers, one of which is to construct only one sidewalk, whereas two is required, which they've, they've got, they've asked for that waiver, you know, almost twenty years ago. They got it. They contributed money. So here they are again constructing one sidewalk, asking for a waiver from the second sidewalk. And the question again is, should they be required to, to contribute?
I mean, the interesting thing is, if I can comment on that, though, is, is the one sidewalk they're putting in obviously comes up the road on the side of St. Paul Lane, so it'll turn into St. Paul Lane, as, as Paul just said. Of course, they are constructing that, I think it's lot thirty or twenty-nine in the Spalding Hill Plan, which is actually technically on St. Augustine, and we had some conversation about, you know, this parcel that's technically could be seen as an extension of the St. Augustine development being included in the Spalding Hill Development, that, that difficult one that's up by the rocky area that I know Kate was not a huge fan of uh that lot in particular. Um, you could argue that, you know, by not extending the sidewalk at least from the other side of St. Paul Lane down St. Augustine Drive, you know, they're not sort of providing, I mean, there's not a lot of traffic on that road, right? But, but I don't know. I can take or leave the sidewalk fund, but it also wouldn't break my heart if we asked them to uh, to make a contribution to the sidewalk fund either.
Okay, I'm, you know, my, my thought is that they've already contributed about eleven or twelve thousand.
Yeah.
And it, you know, because they're you know, kind of reopening to make some changes. To me, it seems like it's almost like, you know, uh, almost double, double pay, making them double pay for it, so.
Yeah, I can see that.
Kind of my approach.
I agree with you.
I can see that.
So Mr. Chair, uh, Paul Sterry, Town Engineer, to be clear, there are no sidewalks physically anywhere on St. Augustine now, and that was the nature of the, the waiver and the contribution. Uh, but uh, you know, there, it's a result of Spalding, of course, they're putting one down to Groton Road, but there are none up there now.
Right, so the one that will extend up to St. Paul will certainly be a, a, you know, a positive addition.
Absolutely.
I guess, I guess my point, Darren, is I think there's net three additional houses on St. Augustine from the time of the decision in two thousand and two, when they made the first contribution to the sidewalk fund. St. Augustine was a smaller development at that time, is, is my only point.
No, it's a good point. It's a good point. I, you know. I guess my thought is, you know, it's, it's not enough to, you know.
Yeah.
Bring another contribution.
Yep.
So, Kate?
So, a lot of these waivers and, and, and uh some of the conditions, they keep referencing how they were already approved in the original. So if we're not doing, are they in here because you have to have them in here because the portion of the road that the waivers refer to is, is being modified? Is that why we have to redo these waivers?
Kate, this is Jeff. I don't know if this will help, so.
One sec.
When the planning board approved it originally, they did grant a number of waivers, but that was under the context of it being a minor street, a dead end, not more than ten lots. And now they're here before you because it's under the context of a secondary road, which has different standards. And so legally, the board has the ability to, as they reconsider those same waivers, it's for a different project, so to speak. You legally have the opportunity to go back and, you know, get consideration for those waiver requests. We did color code it because to us, you know, in your draft decision, it's true, the applicant did, you know, um, contribute money previously for sidewalk funds. That is true, and they are uh proposing a whole host of off-site improvements as part of, you know, the Spalding Hill State subdivision. There's a significant amount of work out in Dunstable Road. Um, granted it, it will benefit the development, but there are substantial improvements. And so I guess I would suggest if you, you know, a contribution is necessary, maybe you could think about, you know, splitting the baby in half. If they paid X dollars back in the day, you know, maybe give them credit for that towards it in the here and now, and, you know, whatever they're, they're not doing, but, you know, we don't feel strongly that, you know, they should have to contribute again. We defer to the discretion of the planning board because it is gray, and they are making a number of off-site improvements, so. They did come in starting with thirty-one lots and have an approval for, they had a, a yield approved of thirty-one lots, and they're down to twenty-nine, so. I don't know if that helps.
So Mr. Chair, uh, are we I had a bunch of comments on the document as a whole. Do you want to go over the comments, or do you want to do the waivers one by one? How do you want to proceed?
Uh, I don't know. Let's, let's, let's figure out the uh, the sidewalk one first, and we can go, I guess, to uh the additional comments, Kate, so.
Okay.
Mike, what's your thought on the, on the sidewalks?
Well, I, I feel that, that they paid originally. I don't know that I feel that they should have to pay again, especially now they're putting in a sidewalk and they're improving that, obviously to the benefit of the other subdivision, but um I, I'd be okay with that waiver and not, not seeking any contribution to the sidewalk fund.
Okay, it's kind of that's where, that's where my, that's where I am. Um.
So, so Rebecca said that they've already paid twelve thousand, and on page five of the uh decision, it, it says there would be a savings of ninety-three hundred. So what's the difference?
Kate, the, the twelve thousand is what they paid into the, to the um sidewalk gift fund originally in two thousand and two, when they got the original waiver. The ninety-three hundred in the ninety-three hundred that's in this decision is what it, what it would cost to put in a second sidewalk. Currently.
And the original twelve thousand was for no sidewalk?
Correct. They had a waiver to, to not put any sidewalk in.
So the question is, um, that's like a delta of three thousand, do, so do we feel that they should contribute an additional three thousand dollars based on today's prices or, or not?
I'd say no.
Yeah, I would say no. Like I said, I, and, and I don't, I don't, I don't know if we have a basis for, you know, there's not so many feet of, of sidewalk or something like that. I mean, it's
Oh, wait a minute.
They, they've already paid uh for a basis of getting the waiver in the first place, and now that was for zero sidewalks. Now there's going to be a sidewalk down most of one half of the road. So I, I, I don't feel the need to go back and ask for another, another contribution.
And, and I don't think we can arrive at that. I, I don't think we can arrive at, I'm sorry, I don't think we can arrive at that three thousand dollar delta that way anyway, right? Because they paid twelve, and what they would be realizing is ninety-three hundred. So in theory, they paid, that, that's like an overage payment of three thousand dollars. You could, you could argue. However.
Ninety-three hundred twice, though, right? So ninety-three hundred each side. Did they get a waiver for, yeah, so it's twice, so it's eighteen thousand.
Right.
I mean, personally, they've already put in the twelve thousand, and it's been collecting interest. Um, or we haven't spent it. Um. I, I kind of agree with the others. I was just trying to play devil's advocate for Dylan.
Yeah.
If I, if I can, this is Jeff for Dylan's point. They've kind of already paid six thousand for a sidewalk that they're now building, so.
Right.
Yeah. That's how I look at it. If, if it was for two sidewalks before, and now they're just getting one, so I, I, I think so I would uh, I'm okay with granting a waiver to build the, to build the second sidewalk and that um I'm trying to think that they do not have to pay any additional funds.
Okay.
That we would, that we would stop that we would stop before we're at the blue, so we would just keep the first four.
Talking about the findings, Kate?
Yeah.
Yep. And I do want to point out, if you may recall, uh, we're not asking for you folks to vote on all the waivers individually. As you may recall, council advised us to take one vote at the end, um, subject to all the waivers, you know, listed therein for legal purposes.
So, so, so I would recommend that we remove the, the fifth bullet under this waiver. And so that they are not, they don't, do not have to uh provide an additional amount into the sidewalk gift account.
All right, I would agree with that. Mike? I was, Dylan, you okay with that?
Fine with that.
Okay. And then, Kate, you had some additional comments uh on the decision itself?
Well, let's see, the street, do we, uh, I don't know, do you want, if we're doing waivers, let's just do the waivers. So so why do we need the street one to reconstruct a portion of Groton Road because that was already in the, because it was in the original one? Is that why we have to grant this waiver?
Kate, can you go to which, I'm sorry, I, I lost you. Can you tell me what page number you're on?
I'm on page six. Well, you said you wanted us to go through all the waivers and then vote on, vote on them as a block. So I'm on page six.
I, I would only ask you to discuss the waivers if you had issue with anything that was proposed. If you don't have issue,
Oh, okay.
you, there's no need to discuss.
Right.
I do, on, on the next one, uh, on the utility installation, um is, are we uh at station nine plus sixty-five? Is that the portion that's going to be a private road or a public road? Oh, private in perpetuity. Okay, never mind. So I was just wondering why we had to do it, vote on it, but that's okay. Um.
Excuse me, I'm here now, Jeff.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so that, that was the only one. Okay. So that, that was the only one. See, I don't have any comments on the other waivers that, that we haven't already approved. I did have a comment on the language in the first one for the performance surety. The request to release the required on page four, to release the required 15% retainage. Um, I think there should be a reference in there to that this is the surety associated with the original uh, original decision or, or approved plan. Um, because we are going to be requiring a 50% retainage for the, the modified plan. Over.
I think that makes sense. Rebecca, Jeff, because that's something we could, some language we can add in there?
Yeah, we can add another line for a finding, uh, that, that relates to the original subdivision.
That makes sense. Jeff, could you also, just, Jeff, could you also, um, you know, I think it's a good point and maybe even indicate the amount, uh, that's being released. You know, so there's no, you know, the present amount, 15% being, you know, approximately X dollars. Is that Jeff?
We're happy to do that, Lou.
Okay. So everybody knows exactly what we're doing here. And I do agree with her comments, uh, you know, that, you know, it's only the prev, the pre, the present bond, not any future bond.
Right.
That makes sense. Any other, any comments?
That was it for waivers.
Anything else on the, uh, on the decision itself, the language?
Um. I did have a comment. I did have a comment, the project summary. Uh, Lou didn't like, he revised the first sentence. Um, because originally we had the subject property is a lot, is a nine lot. Dimensional subdivision approved by us in 2002. And a 10th lot related and was added in 2015 based on the A and R required plan. And I wasn't here in 2002, but I was here for the vote in 2015. So I tend to agree more with the original wording than the modifications that Lou requested unless somebody on staff who's researched this has found that Lou was correct. Over.
Well, we've given references to the recorded uh, plans at the registry as well as the date of the actions. I guess Jeff, Jeff and Rebecca, that's consistent to what you've looked at. I mean, I don't understand the inconsistency. I mean, I got this from my client, um, but there's books and pages and, you know, I think it's fairly, uh, it's straightforward. I mean, I, I respect what my, the information my client gave me and in that, is, is that your understanding, Jeff and Rebecca?
Well, my review of the original subdivision approval does show it was a 10 lot subdivision. Um. The A and R, I mean, I have, I go with, I'm going to hear what Lou has to say about that. He says it was a lot line adjustment that just rearranged some of the lots and it's still a 10 lot subdivision. I don't have personal experience of how that, that, um, endorsement went through. So I don't know. Maybe Kate has some other history. I know there were some, there were some maybe a little bit of controversy around it. But, um, I can continue to research and try to pin it down.
I'm, I'm just being a pain because I like being correct. That's.
That's okay.
Again, Kate, I took this information from my client who's the most familiar with it. She looked at the registry of deeds. Um, you know, so I had no reason to double check it, but, um, if, uh, Jeff or Rebecca want to check with the registry tomorrow, uh, they can see the lot line got moved.
Right. So this is Jeff. So from a practical standpoint, whatever number is thrown there in the project summary, in my opinion, it doesn't really affect the outcome or, you know, the effect of this decision. We did download all the plans. There were lot line adjustments. There was an A and R that was done after some of those lot line adjustments. I don't know that that, there was actually a conveyance though. So whatever it ends up being, you know, it's really immaterial to the decision at hand. If you want to just trust us and we'll work with the applicant, whatever the outcome is, it is. We have the material. We just haven't had the time today to sift through it, to clarify. We have no reason. The applicant is extremely diligent.
Okay. So we'll just leave it the way Lou had it, if Rebecca had that it was 10 lots. On page seven, conditions of approval. Um, do we get rid of site, site specific condition number one, uh, because we're not requiring a waiver?
Right. So Kate, uh, it seems as though the board has already given us direction. So we're not asking you to wordsmith and pick out every number. Like we will go through the decision and make sure it's consistent. You've agreed to not require additional funds to the sidewalk gift fund. So we're going to take that out, whether it appears in findings or, or conditions.
Okay. No, I'm just, I'm just asking. Um. Let's see. On the conditions, it said to add a condition that no additional lots are accessed to new it without further approval. So we don't have to take action. You are going to add that condition. Over.
It should be in there. It may be at the very end of the decision, but I put it in there.
So.
She just means that we need to remove the parenthetical.
Oh, okay. Cause I, I don't remember seeing that. So maybe somebody can correct me. Um, let's see. Yeah. Um, on number 12 on page nine. Uh, I didn't know if there needed to be any language. This has to be the applicant responsible for maintaining the vegetation. Now, uh, I didn't know if there should be language in, in there until such time as that portion of St. Augustine Drive is accepted as a public right of way.
We're amenable to that?
Okay.
Fine. Thank you, Kate.
Cause they're, they're not going to be responsible forever. Uh, unless, unless we need to keep that in there for the private portion of the, do we need to keep that in there for the private portion? Over.
I don't think that would apply.
No. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Uh. And on page 12, number 49. Well, this is the old one. I don't know. What is it on the, yeah, page 12, number 49. Um. It says, uh, if the approvals are not exercised within a reasonable time period, uh, it would be better to have a definite time period. So. What are we thinking? Like two years, three years?
Well, Kate, this was my so-called handiwork. Um, this is just an advisory of comment. And we just want to, for some reason, if Spalding Hill Estates doesn't move forward, we don't want the lot owners at St. Augustine Drive to be kind of in limbo. We're just kind of putting the thought there that, you know, three years, four years, whatever. It's up to them, their comfort level. And how much time goes by now that the final pavement is down? You know, if they start to get an uneasy feeling, they can come to us and we can develop the right process for them to kind of modify once again to the as-built conditions applied for street acceptance. So it really, the condition doesn't need to be in there. We're just trying to outreach and let them know, like, things don't happen in a timely manner. Come to us and we'll work with you towards street acceptance.
Okay. And Lou's okay with that? That you recognize that's the purpose?
Yes. Jeff and Rebecca. I apologize to Kate. Did, did we, did you make any fur, I just look, I can't even look at this now because it's only the sheets, but did you make any further changes this afternoon? Um, you know, from our last conversations?
Um, no, I did not.
Okay. Some way in the prior ones, did you delete the perpetuity business?
I did. Yep.
Okay. Okay. I got it. All right. Go ahead.
I just want to point out, this is Jeff again. The applicant did ask us, um, to make some truly ministerial edits. I promise you, non-substantive typos, space, comma, that sort of thing. Um, which we do intend to make. They're, they really, you probably wouldn't even notice the differences. They're just very diligent and we respect that. So we're willing to make them. They're truly non-substantive.
And Jeff and Rebecca, I will send over, because again, I, I will send over those two plans tomorrow. I'll have them downloaded from the registry and I'll email them to you in the beginning. So she's having for the files.
Okay. Well, we've got, we've got about eight plans that we downloaded. So I, I think we're all.
All right. If you said, I'm set. Okay. Go ahead. All right, great. All right. So Kate, any other comments on the, on the draft?
Nope, none.
All right, Mike?
I'm good.
Uh, Dylan?
All set.
All right. I am too. I think, like I said, we had a pretty good discussion about it last meeting. Uh, thanks staff and then the applicant for putting together all the details on the draft. Anything else? What's that?
I was going to say maybe audience.
Right. So anything, anything from the, uh, from the audience out there, Rebecca?
Uh, I'm not seeing anything. Let me give it one last little check. Um, no.
Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, I, just to clarify the comment about per, perpetuity. Uh, was that anything to do with stormwater or the easement at the bottom of the road? Or I, I missed what that was about.
No, Paul, that was, um, that was about, um, something, the, the, um, some portion of the road. It was in a waiver. It was one portion of the road remaining private in perpetuity. And there was objection to the in-perpetuity piece.
So nothing about stormwater management or, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right. Anything else from staff?
Um, no, but I do see a hand raised. So I'm going to go to the audience. Is that okay, Darren?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Two?
Um. I'm sorry. I think I, uh, hit the wrong button. I'm sorry. I'm good for now. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. So again, I expect we'll be seeing, seeing these guys again in here sooner than later with, uh, you know, with the next, once the next project commences. So, um, anything else from the board on this one? Uh, can I just ask how, um, the board, Jeff and Rebecca, how does, uh, my client get the, uh, bond money, the 15%? What, what, what has, what's the process? Well, that's not, that's, that's our next, that's our next, uh, item, right? So we'll. Okay. We'll be addressing that. We'll be addressing that shortly. Okay. Thank you. I apologize. All right. So.
Dylan, do you want me to make a motion on the waivers?
Uh, sure.
Well, I think, I think we want to vote, I think we do a motion on the entire decision and inclusive of the waivers, right, Jeff? That's the new kind of format?
That's correct. Town council has advised us to take one vote at the end to approve of the draft decision as modified here in tonight with the waivers as requested therein.
Okay. I move that we, um, that we grant the mod, that the planning board grant the modification to a previously approved definitive subdivision plan. Uh.
Did we close the hearing?
It is under section.
We should close the hearing?
We should probably close the hearing first, right, Kate?
Oh, sorry. You're right. I forgot.
No, it's cool.
I move that we close the public hearings for PB 2017 definitive subdivision, St. Augustine Drive modification to definitive subdivision.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing, say aye, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye.
Okay. I move that we approve the modification to the previously approved definitive subdivision plan for St. Augustine Drive, uh, for the draft decision, uh, presented as modified tonight, including the waivers. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Second.
All right. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, uh, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. All right.
I, I just, this is Jeff. I just want to thank the applicant. They were very patient, uh, with our, uh, circumstances and timing. So they've been very, um, very confident. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Well, on that same subject, since the applicant here, I'd like to suggest that we take general business uh, item number A or uh, item A and, and general business next, which is the request to release the remaining subdivision bond held for St. Augustine Drive. Um. Out of order and, and do that now, if that's, if that's amenable to everybody?
Sure.
Okay. So kind of, uh, as pursuant to Attorney Levine's question about the bond release, uh, we had discussion about, you know, releasing that remaining bond amount. Uh, again, because it's going to be cleaner when the new project starts and will be a new surety established at that time. So we talked about it and then, uh, you know, staff to put, staff put together the bond release, uh, language here. So I guess I'll go to staff for a quick, quick overview on this.
Hi Darren, this is Jeff. I think you summarized it pretty well. So pretty much based on, um, the decision you just reached, um, there is no additional work required, uh, for St. Augustine Drive unless um, the applicant or some third-party developer moves forward with the Spalding Hill Estates subdivision. And if they move forward with that subdivision, they would be required to provide a security for the remaining improvements that would have to be done on St. Augustine Drive. So the surety that exists that's in place, you know, it served its purpose. It satisfied the requirement under, um, Mass General law, that work is done. And so now only more work will happen if Spalding happens. And, you know, they would provide a security as necessary for that. So it really doesn't make sense to hold it. So, um, this math isn't exact. There's some additional interest accrued. So we always ask that if you take such a vote, that you explicitly state plus any interest accrued.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I'll go to, I'll go to the board. Uh, Dylan?
No questions, as we discussed in the previous meetings. Yep. All that's left to do is release this.
Good. Kate?
No questions. So again, uh, Jeff and Rebecca will have to go to town hall to sign a document.
Uh, this should be just the chair, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, we did this form, so it's just Darren.
Okay.
Great. Mike?
No questions. I agree.
Okay. And Bob, can you opine on this one? Staff, can, can Bob chime in on this one?
If he wants to, he can. It's outside the public hearing process. Okay. So.
No comment, other than I was part of the original board that voted for this.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. So I'm in, I'm in favor of the, uh, release of the bond as well. Um, you know, Jeff, do we need a motion to, to enact, enact that?
I move that we, that the planning board grant the release of the road construction performance bond for St. Augustine Drive, station zero plus zero zero to eight plus zero zero in two, in the amount of 143,112 dollars and 40 cents plus any accrued interest.
Great.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of releasing the bond, uh, say aye, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. So as far as timing, Jeff, what is the, uh, what's the timing on that? You need me to come down to the town hall for that?
Uh, correct.
Yeah.
So just let us know and we'll have the paperwork ready for you.
All right, whenever, I can be there tomorrow if that works.
Sure.
Okay, I'll give you heads up in the morning, that's cool. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, it's been a long process, thank you. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you. So, uh, that brings us back to our public hearing items. Now we'll go back to public hearing item number two, which is PB 1923, uh, 73 Nutting Road, Wendell Place. And this is continued from a number of meetings, most recently, uh, where we had discussion was in May. So.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
So I guess I'll go to, uh, wanna go to staff first for a quick overview on this one?
Um, sure, so if you recall, um, at the, the meeting when we last had the applicant before you, um, there were a handful of items that were outstanding that the, that the applicant asked for your opinion on. Um, so the applicant went back and, um, redrafted plans that incorporated those changes that you all had considered and submitted them to engineering, engineering has provided, um, I guess I would say a clean letter, I'll let Paul speak to it. Um, but I think, once you hear from the applicant and from Paul, um, I think we're getting close to the end on this one, so I'll let Paul add anything if he has any comments about the review process.
All right, thank you Rebecca, uh, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, of course, we have, uh, gone over this, uh, subdivision in the preliminary stage, we did in the definitive stage. We looked extensively at traffic with a peer review consultant, uh, at TEC. And, uh, then we looked at stormwater in depth, we had a couple back and forths with the design team. Uh, and then, uh, most recently, uh, with a, uh, a, uh, an advisor to the applicant, uh, we, we talked at length about some of the specific restrictions on lot development and some erosion control issues that we, we pretty much copied from Spalding Hill. Uh, but, uh, in this case, with this different soil conditions, uh, didn't think was the same application. Uh, so we've, uh, we, we've worked with that, uh, advisor to the applicant, um, um, I don't wanna mention any names, but his, his initials are Roddy Palmer at, uh, Westford Realty. And, uh, you know, Roddy is a well-respected, uh, developer, uh, in town, been around a long time. And, uh, he pushed back a little bit on, on, uh, some of the more restrictive restrictions on stormwater management. And, uh, Jeremy and I, uh, both had, uh, a, a couple of different phone calls and meetings with them. And we agreed that some of our language is still, was a little too restrictive. Uh, so we, we softened that up a little bit, I, no compromises to the, what we'll get in terms of a product. But, uh, I think that will come out published to you when this goes, when this gets reduced to writing. Uh, otherwise, uh, this project has been thoroughly reviewed and, uh, uh, we look forward to their successful completion.
Excellent, uh, anything from the applicant before we go to the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Douglas Chan speaking for the applicant. Um, I, I just wanna reiterate, um, what, what Paul said and, and what Rebecca said. And that is that we have been working diligently with the, with the, with staff as well as, um, town engineers. Um, and, and think we've gotten it right, uh, we've got a clean letter, we've addressed the traffic. Um, the board was kind enough to give us some input on some issues, uh, that were a little different in terms of some drainage we were doing. And, uh, as you recall, we discussed providing a, a design for, uh, improved sidewalks. So, um, we agree with, uh, Mr. Morissette and staff that if, if the town, if the board has no further questions or, uh, issues regarding our proposal, we're, we're here to answer any additional information you have, but hope the board would consider, uh, moving towards a decision. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so sort of, we'll go to, uh, we'll go to the board, uh, I'll start with Dylan.
Uh, thanks, I guess in going through the, sort of the back and forth, I guess in the May 20th letter that was back and forth between the applicant and town, and, uh, town engineering, I guess the only question I had was, is there a question regarding building setbacks? Or, or have we arrived at a place that, that makes town engineering happy with the setbacks of the buildings in the subdivision?
Yeah, well, uh, Mr. Chair, again, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, the, the issue has come up on this in some recent subdivision projects where, you know, you see literally cookie cutter images of buildings, uh, septic systems, uh, driveways that yet are not detailed to what is actually gonna be constructed. Once developers begin to talk with clients and, you know, there's, they're gauging the market, which changes every day. So we end up with buildings that look different. You saw this most recently on Hummingbird, uh, when, you know, you see a, a box on a, a lot that turns out to be a box in a pool and a cabana and a gazebo and a patio. And all those things are, uh, contributing to stormwater runoff and, uh, lot coverage and so forth. So we, on this project, asked if we could see plans of actual, like we did on Spalding, plans of, of actual lots before they gets constructed, so we can try to preclude, preclude any of the issues that come up when they say one thing but wanna actually do another. So I, I, I think that might answer your question Dylan, but that's what we're paying attention to.
Yep.
Hi, this is Matt Waterman, I just wanted to add one thing, Paul's comment, um, was just that, I think the, originally there were, the correspondents referred to the 15 foot allowable setback reduction for the front setback, which is allowed under the open space regulations. Um, and their recommendation was that that was not long enough to accommodate a vehicle, um, on the lot. And so what we had talked about and might've got lost in some of the translation or the, the, the volume of paperwork, was that we would like to keep the 15 foot setback, but we would, um, agree to a condition that we would keep a minimum garage setback or driveway length of a minimum of 20 feet, so that the, the parking is not an issue with any conflicts with sidewalks. Um, so you'd have a situation where the house might be 15 feet off, or at least have the ability to present that house 15 feet off the setback. Um, but the driveway would be setback, or the house would be rotated in such a manner that you would still be able to accommodate a driveway on the property of 20 feet. Um, as you know, the, the driveway's still extending to the right away, typically 10 more feet. Um, but we would keep a minimum of, of 20 foot length driveway on the property.
Got it, thank you, I appreciate it.
That's a, that's a better way to explain it, thanks Matt.
Great, thank you. Dylan, anything else?
That's it, thanks.
All right, cool. Kate?
Rick, make sure, where is my thing? Yeah, um, I, let's see, I did have, I need to go through the engineering things, uh, ready shovel-ready sidewalk, that, that, if there were a condition, uh, about a shovel-ready sidewalk, that it shall be completed prior to the issuance of first certificates of occupancy and that it's also reviewed by town engineering to make sure it's, it is shovel-ready. Um, uh, we have spent a lot of time, oh, um, there, then, uh, in, uh, talking about boundary, boundary markers between the properties and open space, that, uh, Land Tech has requested that they be allowed to use plastic markers. I would like to hear more about these plastic markers and how durable they are, 'cause if they're gonna fall down and fall apart, they are no better than having wooden ones. And I, I would prefer to have granite markers delineating the, um, the, uh, open space instead of plastic. Plastic seems kinda cheesy as well, um, so I don't know if somebody wants to comment on their request to use plastic markers.
Hi, hi Kate, this is Matt again with Land Tech. Um, there was a lot of markers presented in the, the plan of lands, portion of the plan set. Um, as you know, the, the, the rake, the subdivision regulations require granite bounds along the roadway at any points of curvature. Um, those are all shown on the plan of land. Um, in addition, there's easements, um, in the open space section where the two detention basins are in the northeast or the southeast, excuse me. If you're looking at our plans, it's the upper right, um, that's on your screen right now. Um, there's easements that go around those detention basins, and those are delineated, um, on the back corners of those properties where the drain lines come down, the property lines of the two lots with iron rods. And so when we were kind of doing a summation of all the monuments that were providing with the subdivision and they, and I don't have the exact numbers on the top of me, but it was upwards to like 50 stone bounds and iron rods. I mean, there was, there was no shortage of monuments. And so what I think the goal of these markers are consistent with what you would see on conservation properties. There are circular metal tags that are put into the tree with, um, with a nail or, what are those? The aluminum nails. And they, and it's just to go along the back property lines every 25 or 50 feet to, to help further document that kind of boundary of the open space. And in particular, if you're looking at this plan on our screen, it's kind of the upper right section behind those lots. Um, and if I had to guess, it's lots 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, the, the lots that are along that upper right corner. And, and there's, and there is pins that are in the back corner, because a lot of the rear corners of those lots coincide with the easements for those detention basins. And so this kind of filled in the gap in between those, those rods. Um, would be more than happy to coordinate with staff or engineering if, if they feel like they, there's a need for another or more monumentation, but I can assure you, there's, there's a lot of monumentation that gets put in with this subdivision.
Okay, I, I just didn't understand what exactly that was for, so I leave it up to engineering. Uh, I'm just going through the stuff. Um, there was something, uh, about, duh, 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 duh. Never mind. I'm assured that I'm assuming that engineering has checked everything, uh, to help ensure that the runoff for the 100 year event will be directed to the appropriate BMP and not onto Nutting Road. Um.
Well, that's, that's a, yeah. Go ahead, go ahead, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer, uh, yes, we've paid very close attention to that, uh, 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 further encouraged by the fact that one of our select board members lives at the bottom of one of these roads. We've paid a lot of attention to that, actually, so.
You did no more due diligence than you would for any residential.
This is, that's, I was just gonna say the same thing Kate, and, but it, again, with, with our, all of our projects, there is a performance-based nature to this. And if in fact, uh, we'll notice during construction if there is, you know, something, an anomaly occurring that's causing problems that'll have to be addressed.
Okay, so we have concentrated on traffic and on stormwater, and we haven't really discussed anything else about the project. So that's where I'm gonna direct my next comments. And the first one is, uh, on the sidewalks, are they gonna be setbacks from the road? Are, will there be like a, a grass strip between the sidewalks and the roads? 'Cause that's what's recommended in our, and it makes sense that you can walk them in the winter.
Yes, that's, I think there's about a four and a half foot grass strip in between the sidewalks. Uh, there's, the, the, the detail from the town website is, it's a five foot grass strip from the edge of pavement to the sidewalk, but then there's curbing that is in between that too. So it, it, there is a four and a half foot grass strip.
Okay, so it's not directly on the street, that was the main concern. And the other thing is, this is an open space residential development proposal, and there is a requirement for a buffer between the houses and adjacent lots, and I don't see that on the plan for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, uh, 16, 17, and 18. But there's no buffer between the houses and the neighboring houses.
Is there, is there? Paul or Matt?
Not following the, uh, the, the bylaw.
Doug, are you on the line still?
Yes, I am. I guess I'm, I'm. I, I'm sorry, Matt, what, Mr. Chairman, what was the question Mr. Waterman had?
There's, I was commenting that it's an open space development, and one of the requirements is to have an open space buffer between lots and adjacent lots, and there is none, uh, between lots 1 through 5 and that adjacent lot, and then a lot 16 to 18 and, and, uh, whoever's to the other side of them.
Kate, I, I can only assume you're referring to the, the component, the regulation and the bylaw that speaks to a 100 foot buffer zone?
Yep.
All right, and, and we have proposed, with every sub, open space subdivision we've done, we propose buffers. Um, I, I, I'm not sure, um, and, and I'd certainly love to hear, um, your interpretation of that bylaw. As you know, we have struggled with that provision, um, for years in many projects and have essentially proposed buffers that vary, um, for the, for the board's review. Um, uh, one of the things that we moved away from, um, in doing open space developments, as you'll remember, um, early on, the open space developments would be centered in the middle of the lot. We would have a strip of land around the entire outside of the lot, which would be deemed open space. And if, you know, what we found was that that open space was in no way, uh, utilized correctly or used. And essentially, those strips around the backs of the lots became nothing more than a dumping space. Um, and so now we've always designed projects to try and provide open space in a contiguous manner such that it was a big parcel rather than a strip around. Um, and, and I'm also, I think if we look directly at the wording of that language, and, and maybe staff has a comment on its application, um, but, but Kate, that, that, that has never been interpreted to require 100 feet of clear open space between every lot?
Not between every lot, between, between the development and the neighboring lot. And yes, we have had that, so I'm just bringing it up that this isn't in compliance totally. totally with the bylaw.
Well, I, but I think the board has the authority. Right.
You know, and it might be nice for the people in those lots so they don't have to walk all the way up to the, the traffic, to the circle at the end of the road to be able to access the open space, whereas everybody else has open space right behind their houses.
Well, I thought that's kind of why we're required to, to put the sidewalk and then we were required to have access to all open space. I know the bylaw requires access to all open space from public area. So and again, I also recall that we used to put the trails around the backs of the lots and that didn't go over real well either. People didn't want people walking across the backyard.
I'm just stating it. So I would like the opinion of the other board members about this. Because right now.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Something has to be done.
Well, my understanding was that the open space has to be accessible by everybody, you know.
I'm bringing this up because this comes up every single time we have something come before us. And the applicants always say, oh, it's, it's not worth it. And then we get, and then we get pushed back from others like, why didn't you put it in? It's in the bylaw. Ten feet is not, not necessarily good enough. A hundred feet, I can understand is quite excessive. And I'm willing to go with a, a smaller amount. I don't know. I, I want, I just, what's the other, what do the other board members think?
Well, I, I, I think it's more advantageous to have a usable piece of land than necessarily to have open space between, but you know, behind every lot that's abutting another property. You know, having, having common land. Well, that's my own opinion because you asked. So that's, that would be my thought on it.
And I think it's also difficult to ask them to include the extra five feet for the cars. But then to reconfigure this now to push things forward to create a more, a bigger buffer, I would assume. I don't know how you fit that in, right?
Five feet in the sidewalks, that's all within the 50 foot right of way. So there's nothing
Five feet on the driveway for the 15 foot setback. Right.
Yeah, I, I had another question about that. I didn't understand what was written. But I'm just stating it. It doesn't meet the bylaw as written.
Well, I guess we can ask staff. I mean, is this you know.
How about Dylan? Dylan?
Probably isn't the first one we've seen like this. Yeah, I mean, all the rest of the staff, but I mean, the board, I'd love to hear. Dylan, go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out, I'm actually trying to look up in the bylaw. I want to see the exact wording. Because I know about the language Kate's talking about, but I'm just trying to find the page.
I think it's page 65, Dylan.
In, in the bylaw?
Yeah.
Thanks. Kate, but what you're saying, let me just take, I have it here. Hold on. Kate, what you're saying is not in between every single house, but between, now I gotta blow this up. One second. Yeah. So the, I'm trying to see their name. I don't know what number it is. Yeah. But the ones who are, who are, I guess to the left of lots one through five, you're saying there should be more like vegetative buffer there as well as, I guess lots 16, 17, 18, something to the abutter on Nutting Road there.
Yeah, I agree. It doesn't, it's, it's kind of fuzzy, but it's always been interpreted as like, I could be confusing it with the flexible. I know I've been knowing to do that before, but it does say 100 feet.
Well, if I can just read it so everyone can hear it. I don't know if everyone is looking at it, but and I think this is what you're referring to, Kate. It says, all land within 100 feet of any building lot shown on an open space residential development shall be designated as, as open space. Is that the one?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, to Doug's point, I think it is, you know, there are ways to interpret it. And I don't have the institutional knowledge that maybe you all do or some other staff people do about how this has been interpreted in the past.
You know, like I said, I think the way I've approached it and looked at these is more the usable land versus just the, you know, a strip of, a strip of land around the perimeter or something. I think if we can have common access to a usable piece of land, I think that's more valuable than, you know, having an extra couple of feet in, behind, behind houses between the butters.
I agree.
So this is Jeff, in case the board wants some context. I think even in as recent as Spalding, I don't think you have a hundred foot buffer around every single bill of a lot. So some people construe this to mean thou shalt have a hundred foot buffer around the perimeter of your subject property before you can have a building lot, with the exception of say, maybe the, the entrance to the development. It, it's problematic because the open space is falling under a title called common land and it doesn't say you shall have a hundred foot buffer about your property. And I know there are past examples that the planning board has merely required, you know, some lesser buffer in exchange for whether or not they had the right to do it. It's been the custom to have more meaningful open space. So rather than having what isn't high quality open space, they have sometimes required less or none in some areas in order to package it together to have something much more meaningful in terms of providing true value for open space. Because if you did that and provided the buffer, it probably wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible. So you've all identified this as a section of the zoning bylaw that needs to be updated. But we just have not gotten there yet.
I go back to, well, sorry, Dylan. I go back to Spalding and, you know, remember there was, there was some open space. And there was, you know, the only way to access it initially, the initial plan was through people's yard. It was going to be an easement. And then, you know, that wasn't amenable. So they went back and built it actually a public access to that open land. So that's kind of where I am with the open space as opposed to the individual lot buffer, you know, to all the butters. So Mike?
I think to, to be fair, you know, if this board has, and I think we've participated in some of these that we have required that either we're going to take a stance on it, you know, prior to them coming to us and make a decision or, or, or change the bylaw. I don't think it makes sense in this development. And they've got the year field plan and they have the many lots that they're going to get, but then to try to squeeze them or rearrange them, I think we'd lose that nice parcel in that they're going to get out of it. So while I think it does definitely have to be looked at because it is part of the bylaws, I don't think we should follow strict, apply this strictly in this case.
Okay. Go back to Dylan.
No, it's fine. I think one of the things we did with Spalding where we couldn't have that sort of hundred foot hard buffer though is we did agree with the applicant on some areas of do not cut to provide some sort of separation to the abutters from the, the, the development. I mean, I think one thing we have to keep in mind is when we do these open space plans and we put everything into smaller spaces, it does present a very dense, I think facade to the neighbors, right? It's like you suddenly, you know, you had woods and now you have a whole lot of houses packed in close. So I mean, I definitely can appreciate that having, you know, some vegetation there to kind of break that up a little bit is, is something that benefits the neighbors, especially with something like this. I mean, maybe we can ask the applicant. I'm looking at the, you know, at the the site plan here now that kind of shows the whole development. I mean, how much can you do with the existing vegetation or with plantings to provide, you know, like a fairly strong buffer at the back of lots, I guess, one through five and, and pretty much 16 through 18, I think. I mean, Kate, unless I'm wrong, I mean, those are the ones that really are where it would be strongly visible to the neighbors and the, and the open space doesn't provide some buffering to that development unless you see other ones.
Right.
What, certainly the, the understanding of that rule is the intention, as was discussed, to provide some buffer to abutting neighbors in a situation where you might have higher density within an open space development compared to conventional. We also talked earlier and, and Mr. Starrett mentioned the fact that we're going to be held to a very, a new standard and one that I think is going to be employed going forward with all projects. And that is, we're going to actually have to show the clearing and the location and the size of all buildings on the lots so that they can be assured that our stormwater management will be done correctly and will conform to what we've proposed. Which means we're going to show a very specific cutting plan for each lot. And, and Matt, I'm going to ask you to comment. But on the plan we're looking at, you can see that there's a proposed tree line that's being left along the back of lots two, three, four, five. Am I safe in, in saying to the board that our plans will show that specific line or a very specific line which will in fact show that we'll be leaving vegetated buffer? Because if the intent of that bylaw, Kate, is to provide protection to our neighbors, it's really only lot two that is directly, you know, abuts the house. Where, where's setback, the requisite setback from the backyard line? They're setback sufficiently from their sideline. So you know, these houses are really not going to impinge, certainly not lots three, four, and five, which abut the wooded portion of our neighbor's lot. So it's really only lot two that is in direct line. Same with on the other side. It's only lot 18, the lot on the street that directly abuts the existing neighbor and, and lots 12, 13, and 14, if I'm reading them correctly. Again, they abut to the back of the undeveloped portion of the, the neighboring lot. So I think we could agree or would certainly agree to a defined cutting line that leaves that buffer there, which I think is what the intention of the bylaw is. And, and it's really a very limited number of homes that have direct impact in any event, but we can certainly provide a defined plan that will save those buffers or those trees. Matt Waterman, Mike speaking out of school here?
No, that's correct. The, the tree line that's shown is a very strict tree line in the sense that that's what our drainage is designed for. And there was a lot of effort that was put into it with working through all of the, the drainage and the stormwater analysis. And that ensuring that that this lots that represents, and that's, I think it plays into the condition that you talked about that the, the developers will be required to provide, you know, site plans for the individual lots to confirm drainage and tree line and buffers that are shown on the approved plans.
And if we make this a requirement that those are no cut zones, I forget how we've done it in the past so that the people who buy the property know that these are no cut zones.
Kate, this is Jeff. We would just, it would just show a no cut easement, whether it's, you know, five feet, 10 feet, whatever. I suggest the applicant just take a crack at the select lots that they proposed to maintain vegetation and come up with some simplified line work. Just to suggest some appropriate easements in those cases. And then that would carry through with the land and be shown on these final plans too.
And, and the easements get recorded or something?
Yeah, if, if the board goes with that approach, as with any other lot, they would have to show any encumbrances such as easements affecting that lot. And it would also be shown on the subdivision plan.
Because I'm just thinking, you know, normal homeowner doesn't have a clue about this. They just see trees in the backyard. And unless there's some documents that they get that's recorded somewhere that they have to get, they're not going to have a clue that we decided in 2020 that these are basically no cut zones.
So just a couple of thoughts. Respective buyers could sign an acknowledgement or the other option or combination is, I know I had a conversation previously with our conservation resource planner. I think some of those markings that you were discussing earlier, I think Carol Gumbert has suggested they're, you know, fairly effective. If you have, you know, some simple occasional markings, it's, it's a more visible reminder and a few go a long way. So I don't know if that's something you would want to consider or we just put it to the applicant to come up with, you know, a suggestion or two for the board to consider. They hear your concern. And let's see if they can work with us to come up with a proposal for you.
I like that approach.
We can do that.
All right. I think if the applicant can work with staff for some solutions here in terms of, you know, defining that no cut zone, their buffer, and then maybe try and also to figure out a way that can, that can pass on, you know, you know, be transferable to other owners. And the tree line that's shown on the plan, with the exception of lot one, which is a corner lot, but lots two, three, four, five, and 16, 17, 18, effectively, the tree line is on that rear setback. If you draw the average line down that back of all those lots, and that's 30 feet that's being shown, just for a reference.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like an opportunity to do that.
Okay. And is there, could you also, you know, I, I would ask that as a favor or just a request, you know, a kind of further highlight on those lots we just talked about, kind of where that actually is. You know, this, it's hard to kind of read on this plan, but maybe like for Kate's behalf, or it might, it might help to see actually, okay, this is actually where that line would be.
We can do that.
It's going to be a problem with all of them if that dotted line there is required in order to, for the stormwater to, to work. There has to be a way for these lot owners to appreciate that all those trees, all that wooded area has to stay there.
Right. No, I, I think the goal of the open space was not only to provide open space, but to provide undisturbed land, which coincides with the backs of a lot of these lots. I mean, we have almost nine acres of open space on a 27 acre parcel. But we only disturb 15 acres. So we're, you know, the, the nine acres open space translates to 12 acres of undisturbed land, which in our opinion, and, and based on the whole drainage, that is what we're preserving and providing with this development. We're not preserving just the eight acres or nine acres of open space. We're preserving the 12 acres of undisturbed land, which is what this tree line is delineated and what we've agreed to and what I think, while we continued our last meeting and why Roddy was talking with engineering. That was a big sticking point for us and what that limit of work was and what it meant and how it was going to be carried forward with the developer, how it was going to be carried forward with the homeowners. So we have put a lot of time and effort into that tree line. It's not just a dotted line that's drawn on the plan. Been documented through Paul's conditions of approval. It's been documented in the stormwater report and it's been documented in the plan set.
And it should also be in the homeowner somehow. I don't know.
And we can do that. We can propose that method. Kate, the conservation commission often imposes similar restrictions. So we can carry that process forward here.
Right.
I had one last question. That had to do with grading and such because you'll be moving earth around. Is all the earth going to stay? all the earth going to stay on the site? Do you anticipate moving significant portion of the uh topsoil off the site? Over.
Um, Matt Waterman again with Land Tech. Uh, we we did go through um, the updated volume calcs. We were working with the applicant who was getting a handle on the volume of dirt and we, a- as you recall, and I don't know if it was at the last meeting, we did talk about the the traffic peer review, TEC did not only did a traffic for the offsite improvements or for the offsite traffic, but also an evaluation of the subdivision, um, the geometry and the layout of the subdivision, and that included um some of the SAG vertical curves, um, didn't meet the the minimum K-values, which is um, one of the standards for when you're designing sharp, so you don't have a sharp dip in the road. Um, so we met those standards and we we increased or lengthened those SAG curves. And when we did that, we actually ended up with, you know, a three to four-foot fill and a couple of those those SAG curves. Um, so we were surprised when we did the updated volumes, you know, I I think everyone just kind of anticipated a, you know, a net cut in the for the subdivision, just because coming in Wendell Place Road. Um, you know, there's that large cut going into the project. Um, but when we do the full cut fill caps for the whole subdivision, it actually ended up being a 2,000 cubic yard fill requirement. So we're actually, you know, you know, straight numbers on the cut fill from the existing grade to the proposed grades. It's a, it's a net fill requirement. I think by the time we do all the excavations for the foundations and the utility trenches, I don't, I think it'll end up being closer to a balanced site. Um, so there's, we're not anticipating large volumes of dirt being leaving this site.
Okay, so it wouldn't trigger the earth removal bylaw?
Correct.
I just wanted it part of the record.
Kate, what what bylaw was that?
It's in the general bylaws. There's a nurse removal bylaw that I forget how much is going to be moved.
Right.
If you're going to remove more than a certain amount, uh, you have to get approval or show show that there's nobody within town that can use it first.
Thank you.
No, and I know I did, we did talk, and I I I'm sure then I I haven't talked to the applicant directly, but I don't, they would not have a problem with ensuring that the tops are conditioned, that the top soil either remains on site or is um an effort is made to make sure that it is utilized in the town of Westford.
That won't be an issue.
Good. You'll need it all.
No kidding.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Kate. Mike?
Uh, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
All right, uh. Uh, so I had just a few things. When I noticed in the uh back and forth between the applicant and engineering, there was some discussion about uh the timing of curving and when that goes in, um, you know, for drainage purposes. And I was just trying to hear from either engineering and the applicant about, you know, is there, is it understanding on that thing with uh as far as that timing of that cut of that curbing?
Yeah, and and I don't want to cut in front of Paul, but I'm, we did, what what is anticipated and what is done typically is when the binder course of pavement is put down, they put in a temporary berm. It's it's kind of the standard. Um, typically, when the binder goes down, there's still construction vehicles, concrete trucks, large heavy vehicles that are accessing the lots. There's very limited control on the truck drivers. They cut across the front lawn. There's no lawn there, but they cut across directly to the foundation, and the curbing gets destroyed. So in an effort to to ensure that our curbing is presentable at the end of the project and acceptable and in accordance with the the bond release and the as-built plans, the curbing is typically done just prior to the finished course of pavement. Um, so we have no issue with putting down the temporary berm. I think it was just semantics between the definition of curbing and whether you put in formal curbing at the time of the binder or if it was a temporary berm. Um, we made the argument that this temporary berm meets the standard. Um, it it helps control the stormwater runoff during construction prior to completion of the project, um, directing all the runoff to the catch basins and preventing erosion control issues down gradient. And I think.
Yeah, it's a good summary, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterretown Engineer. I would, I would concur with Matt's comments. We don't want the the slope granted destroyed, but at the same time, we need to have some kind of control on the flow of stormwater in the temporary berm lip will accomplish that.
Okay, good. Um, well, and that brings me to the point that we already touched on a little bit. It was about stormwater. Obviously, it's a big priority here. A lot of the neighbors have opined early on in the discussions about this, so you know, I think it's a big focal point of this project, uh, including the kind of you know, revolutionary kind of drainage system that's been, that's been proposed here. So that's why it was a, is a big, big concern. So um, then I would again emphasize for, you know, engineering to kind of, you know, stay on top of that, make sure that the stormwater is is constantly addressed as during during the construction process. So um, one of the things we talked about, too, was the entrances. Uh, we talked about lighting and visual intrusion and stuff like that. We kind of, you know, I think I proposed some sort of lower lighting or something for the entrances. Did the applicant consider anything like that for the entrances and where they enter uh Nutting Road?
Uh, they did again, Matt Waterman with Land Tech. Um, and as you recall, one of the conditions that was in the the peer review for the traffic, um, TEC was that they had concerns or general recommendations to the board to consider um lighting at the entrances to help ensure that motorists are able to to see the, you know, the entrances for Lady Constance Way or Wendell Place. Um, but they also kind of reiterated that by opening up, you know, some of the tree and cutting of the trees of the subdivision, that'll help just provide some natural lighting. Um, the applicant did go talk to as many neighbors that would answer their door in COVID-19, um, that most of the responses were against um lighting. Um, and then they actually let us know that there was lighting along Nutting Road already, and they actually requested that we take down that lighting. Um, I did look at the lighting, and unfortunately, our surveyors didn't pick up the street light on the utility poles, but there are two utility poles on our side of the street that have streetlights. One is in the um, lower right corner as you're looking at this plan um in front of you, right, almost on our property corner with the next neighbor to the south. Um, and then one utility pole is almost direct center middle of our project, um, where the in between the two roads, almost exactly in between, where that sharp angle point in the in our property line along Nutting Road is, um, it's poles number 21 and 26 that have existing light fixtures along Nutting Road.
Okay, so there's no, no, so there's, there's no additional lighting at the very entrance there, then that's?
We weren't proposing any. We do have the the streetlights, the residential post lights proposed for all of the the houses within 10 feet of the right-of-way in accordance with the bylaw.
Right, okay. So I guess, Mike, I would add a comment then that when the sidewalk plan is being done, um, to consider lighting for that as well. So, you know, obviously, a sidewalk's a different animal, so if people are using that at night, just please consider the lighting on that as well.
And we'll make sure that the existing fixtures are clearly noted on the plan so that it's um, which was not shown on this plan. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I guess I'll go to, uh, Dylan, did I, did you have anything further, Dylan?
Nope, I'm good.
Uh, I guess I'll go to the audience. Rebecca, is anybody out there raising their hand?
Um, I don't see anything. Uh, no.
Okay. All right, so anything else from staff?
No.
Okay, how about the board that is um you know, the applicant is going to be kind of proposing some language and solutions for the uh for that buffer? Um, you know, is staff comfortable with asking staff, uh, or is the board comfortable asking staff to put together a decision? Uh, are there any other hurdles that we see in the way of of uh of asking for that?
I I have one other thing. What's the slope on parcel A, the recreation area?
Um, it it varies. It's an existing kind of, it's this lot, it's consistent with the topography of the parcel as a whole, in the sense that it's, it does vary. It does have a a depression in the middle of it. Um, I don't remember. It's a 1.62 acre parcel, um, that's kind of a darker shape down the, on the upper left um, shown on this plan, parcel A. Um, but there is a a depression that kind of in the middle. Um, but our goal was to keep this treed and undisturbed. Um, it is adjacent to the existing um, the red line easement or the old trolley line that runs from East Boston Camps to towards Nabnasset.
They do, you are proposing putting in like a trail connector?
Yes, we do have a trail that will connect um, from the subdivision in two points um, to and through that recreational space to the trail that exists um along the old trolley line, which is a very nice trail. I run it all the time.
Thank you.
Right. So anything else from the board in terms of anything in the way that would, you know, anybody, is everybody comfortable asking staff to put together a draft decision? Yeah, I guess I'll go to the, you know, Dylan?
Yep.
Hey, Kate?
I guess so. Yeah, because pretty much everything has been addressed. But the only, just, just that that buffer and no-cut buffer, I think.
I would think if we, yeah, if we asked staff to put together a draft, it would be, you know, considering discussion from tonight as well, obviously. Um, Mike?
I'm fine with them working on the draft.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion for that? Not for, can we just?
Have them, have them drafted. Direct staff, I move that we direct staff to prepare draft uh decision for uh 73 Nutting Road.
Second. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye.
And so do they want to come back to our next hearing, which is in August?
August 3rd.
August 3rd?
Yes, yes, please.
That staff, is that okay?
That's enough time.
Yeah, I mean, I think considering that the next meeting after that is September 21st, I think August 3rd is fine.
Okay.
I move that we continue public hearing for 73 Nutting Road, Wendell Place, to the planning board meeting on August 3rd, starting at 7:30 PM, probably via web. Karen, you talk about when we're going to go back to live meeting?
Second.
I don't think we have a date yet, Kate. Motion and a second. All those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, I say aye.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us then, you guys talked about uh 65 Powers Road and then continuing that one?
Yes.
During the technical difficulties, so that brings us to public hearing item number four, 5153 Main Street, which is a new item. Uh, that being said, we can invite Bob back to uh to participate in this one. And then uh.
Wait, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I move we waive the reading of the public hearing notice.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
I move that we open the public hearing uh PB 2023 for 5153 Main Street.
Do we want to move to uh waive the fee first?
Oh, you're, thank you.
So moved.
I'm that we waive the filing fee for 5153 Main Street.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
I say aye.
Okay, I move that we open the public hearings for PB 2023, 5153 Main Street.
For a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, so uh I will go to staff for a, for an introduction to this one or an overview. Darren, this is Jeff. Um, actually, in this case, I think it would be preferable to just go straight to Towns Consultant, uh, Chris Logan. I think he's well-prepared to give an overview. Excellent. Welcome, Mr. Logan.
Thank you, and thank you, board members and Jeff. Uh, we're the architects for the uh reload through communication tower, which is a replacement of the existing communication tower, which presently abuts the uh backside of the fire station. Intent here is to construct a new tower, same type of tower, a trellis tower, same height as existing tower on the town hall campus. They'll be located roughly across the parking lot in the grassed area on the southwest corner of the police station lot between the police station building and the existing police station parking. It will be a standalone tower, that being it will not be reliant on any building structure. It'll be 65 feet tall, and it will run all of its communication lines back to the head-end building, which is located in the generator building that is affixed to the um to the existing communications building. So what you're looking at on this diagram is the new tower is the triangle shown in the upper right-hand corner. That's in the grassed area next to the existing police parking lot. And there is a dotted line from that tower back to the generator building. You see the two dotted um rectangles in the generator building. That's the existing head-end building that the existing tower cables presently feed uh the racks. And the new feed to that corner of the building will be from the new tower. This will allow the existing tower to be dismantled, provided to the town for future use, and will allow the fire station to be uh demolished when the town decides it is time to do so.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, I will go to, it looks great to me. Um, obviously, there's a need for it, given that the building that's, the current one's attached to will be gone at some point. So, uh, it's the same height as the existing one. Um, so I think, you know, it's great to me. I'll go to the board. Uh, Dylan?
Yeah, I mean, in looking through the criteria, I think they they meet all the criteria for this kind of a plan. I think they've done a good job of um, mirroring the height and and minimizing the visual intrusion. Obviously, it's a sensitive part of town, being that it's so close to the town common, but um, in looking at the plans and sort of considering where they're relocating it to, I think it's a good choice. I didn't, I didn't have any particular issues with this.
Right. Kate?
Um, I agree, it's 65 feet, which is what the existing tower is. It's slightly back. Uh, my only concern was um the face of it will be a lot more visible, I believe, from the street because they're probably base of it will be a lot more visible, I believe, from the street, because there probably, well, will there be a building in front of it? And right now, they're proposing a chain link fence. If they wish to keep it a chain link fence for security reasons, I might recommend that at least on the one or two sides that are visible to the public, that maybe they put in lattice, these plastic lattice strips, maybe they come in different colors, so that it could, could blend in and people notice the chain length fence.
Certainly, I can speak to the fence a little bit. We had some discussions this past week about the fence with the email correspondents, the police station, and also with the tower consultant. The fence is not a requirement for all towers. It generally is placed around a tower where a tower is in a remote location, is not under surveillance. This location is, of course, next to the police station and there is CCTV cameras on that side of the, of the station because of the police parking and the impounded car area. So therefore, the police may not require a fence around this tower. There will not be a way to go up to the tower and start to scale it. All of the steps that are built into the tower for its installation are removed at the end of installation, so you're left with just this lattice structure, which is not as easy to climb as one with footholds. So the thought is, as this progresses into the bid phase, the fence may not be part of the project.
All right, thank you.
So instead of that, you might have a little garden or something to, around the base of it?
Yeah, there is a requirement for a pad around the tower. And then, but beyond that, it's either the sidewalks on, on the two sides and the other two sides are landscaped areas. There is another landscape there beyond the sidewalk that has a mature tree on it, that will remain, and also a mature tree on the police station side in that niche where the police station sort of has a jog in it. But there is some opportunities for plantings there.
Sure. Mike? I recall, was this a town meeting? We had a presentation on this maybe last year, but it's always good to me. You know. So I don't have any questions or any issues. Mike? Bob?
I have two, two areas of questions. I had spoken with town staff earlier today and I've asked if a plan could be just shown with a 65 foot fall zone around the base of this, just to indicate the area that is at risk if the tower were to fall over, because it is going to be different from the area where it's presently located. And my second question is, I guess I'm a little concerned about the exposure of the base. I understand there's a fence, but I'd just like to explore a little bit in terms of what would happen if a car accidentally or intentionally were to come at this tower, what the impediments are to prevent this, a car or truck from hitting this tower and causing it to collapse. I mean, are we going to put, I mean, the curbing, the, what's the, what's the rating on the fence? Is it possible to put some kind of heavy duty bollards around the base?
Yes, there, there would be bollards around the base. All towers have bollards around them, close to the tower, not, you know, outside the tower, but that would prevent any impact to the tower itself. They're galvanized steel bollards that are sunk oh, four or five feet into the ground and stick up, you know, four or five feet and fill the concrete. We have shown on this plan, you're looking at the 65 foot radius from the center of the tower, and you can see that if the tower were to fall, which would be an unlikely event, that it would fall all within the town hall complex property. Would not affect any adjoining property.
Okay, yep. No, in general, I'm very in favor of this. I don't think it's a significant impact. The visibility in the center is fairly similar to what it is now.
Yes.
Obviously, you see a little bit more of the base if you're looking up the driveway. But no, other than that, I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I think kind of to Bob's point, there's, there's, you know, there's going to be some sort of protection of where somebody trying to ram it. I'm also a little concerned about someone trying to climb it. More so as a prank or something, so if there's no fence around there. You know, I know, Chris, you mentioned that it's harder, harder to climb as it's, it's lattice, but you know, if there's a way to put some sort of deterrent on there to prevent people from climbing it, I would be all in favor of that.
Sure, we can, I can speak to our tower consultant and see what, see what options are, or how to incorporate another towers in scenarios like this where a fence was not installed around them.
Okay. Thank you. I think, but as, you know, as far as the other comments too, I think it's, I'm in favor of it. I think it's, the location's good and it's, you know, pretty minimally intrusive, so I'm happy with that, so.
Thank you.
Anything else from, anything else from the board?
I guess one additional comment, now that we've seen the 65 foot fall zone in response to my question, I think we just need to work with the police and the other public safety entities that are in this area of the town hall complex and maybe look at all the spaces within that 65 foot zone being for municipal official use only. I don't think we want to have any visitors or guest parking in that area. We may not already, I just, I, I'm not familiar right now with what we've marked off there, but I would just suggest that those be municipal parking spaces only.
Yeah, presently, the area where the tower is located is designated as official police parking. You know, the town hall complex doesn't have a, a security gate to separate public from police, but those spaces that it knows into the police station where the tower is, those are police designated spaces, and then in the backside, same thing, it's all police designated spaces.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's my recollection. I just wasn't 100% positive. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thanks. And then, Chris, just something to keep in mind too, along that line, it's, you know, once this existing fire, old fire station building is raised and there's a new structure there, some sort of building, you know, there will probably be additional public parking around there, so, you know, to keep that in mind as well. When that happens. Great. All right, anything, anything from the public?
Let me look. I do, I do see a hand. Hold on one second. Mr. Chu?
Yes, I just got a couple of questions. First is, I understand that this tower needs to be taken down because the the firehouse would need to be, you know, demolished. Is there a long-term plan for, for the the replacement of the current fire department? That's my first question. The second question is, has the, has the team considered alternative to where the proposed location is? For example, you know, maybe behind the police station or on top of the, of the town hall building, like within the coop block, is it, you know, it's kind of, go get it back to Kate's point. Where it is, you can see it from the street. And, you know, you could put a six, six foot link, chain link fence in there. Nah, it's, you know, aesthetically, it doesn't look very pleasing. I mean, granted, we could put maybe ladders or plants and so forth, but are there, are there options that we, that, that's been looked at? I'm just curious as to.
Thank you. I'll answer the first one. It's, you know, that, that, that existing fire, old fire station building will be raised at some point and the town is you know, alternatives for what that building is going to ultimately be. So, you know, we've had a couple of proposals. I know the permanent town building committee is looking at different proposals, so kind of stay tuned and, you know, follow along with the town meeting and stuff, because there's, there'll probably be another proposal coming up pretty soon, so. And then I'll let Chris, if you don't mind, addressing the second question as far as have alternative spaces looked at.
Certainly. We did look at areas around the side and back of the police station or the tower. The concern was raised about the quality of the transmission. The longer the cable run from the tower to the head and room can affect your, your transmission of your, of your signal. So you're advised to keep it as close to your head and room as possible. It's also exponentially more expensive the longer the runs are, because there are fairly significant cables that are placed in concrete enclosed dock banks. So it's not a, a simple wire that you run from the tower, the tower down into the building. The decision that the group of people who we're working with came to is they felt that they would rather have it within eye shot of the police station, completely within the view range of the CCTV system, so they were able to monitor it. It would be monitored by the dispatch by dispatch office. And if you were to locate in the perimeter of the site, they would have to then set up cameras separately for the tower, and that would be an added expense.
Thank you. Sure. Any other questions out there, Rebecca?
Um, no.
All right, great. All right, anything else from the board? Or a, a motion?
So, so we're okay. So if we closed it and voted on it tonight, do we think that staff has all of our comments? Or what, what, what would be condition?
Well, I guess I would suggest if everyone's amenable, applicant and everybody, that you direct us to dra, to draft a decision and we'll come back on the third and review and then close. Mr. Logan, does that work for you?
That does work for us. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I move that we continue the public hearing for 5153 Main Street to the planning board meeting on August 3rd, starting at 7:30 PM via webinar.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. Do we still need a motion, Kate, to direct staff to draft a decision?
Um, yeah, sure, you could make one. Doesn't hurt. I don't think it's required.
I move.
Second. All right, good. All those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Say aye. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You too. All right, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move on to general business, and we've already addressed a few of these items, E, C, and D. We'll start with general business, item B, PB 1917. To Hummingbird Lane, a request to authorize planning department sign off for the certificate of occupancy where the as-built plan is inconsistent with the approved plan, so.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, I'm just going to recuse myself for this one.
Okay, thanks, Mike. You know, this is, we've obviously been here a lot, but this one, is there staff, you want to give a quick or a brief overview? And I guess we can go to, to engineering as well?
Or Darren, this is Jeff. So as you may recall, once this applicant, the Buchies, purchased their lot, as you recall, the definitive subdivision plan, it just had a conceptual layout. And the Buchies, they did some clearing on their lot and they were proposing a dwelling that was represented substantial departure from the amount of impervious area. So as with another applicant, they filed for an amendment, the stormwater management permit, that was for just their own lot. And they had the benefit of being able to mitigate any of the additional runoff on their own lot, such that the rest of the development would not be adversely affected by the increase in impervious area. And then, once we received the as-built plans from Mr. Hammer, who's here tonight, I believe, there were found to be some discrepancies. So there are some discrepancies in terms of the location of, say, the, the pool and the apartment structures. And there were some notes added by the engineering department. The drainage was not installed with benefit of inspections by our engineering department. And there may be some small overage of impervious areas. And so I know the engineering department has done some review of the drainage, and I can let Paul speak to that later. But because the plan was inconsistent with what this board approved, we advised the applicant that we would be seeking permission from you folks to authorize us to sign off on the certificate of occupancy request once the engineering department was satisfied with their review of the drainage analysis. So from big picture, you know, the planning board never had the jurisdiction to say where a pool could go, where a cabana could go. It's just that they need to make sure, under the bylaw, that there won't be any adverse effect from that. And so I think when Paul talks, I think he may say that they've done a review and it appears to be consistent with the intent. We're here really to reconcile just the discrepancy between the as-built and the approved plan. And I don't know if that answers your, your, your question or provides enough of an overview. There's still some minor things to be done. My understanding is that the roof runoff has to be connected to the drainage system. And so we would not sign off until our engineering department was satisfied.
All right, let's hear, let's go to, let's go to Paul and get engineering's perspective.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, town engineer. We were unable to present to you a quote, "clean" letter indicating everything was thus and so, because in fact, it wasn't as Jeff explained. However, what you're ultimately trying to do with the subdivisions under, with benefit of our stormwater management bylaw, which was designed and created to prevent issues on these, on these types of subdivisions with stormwater runoff, is to make sure that, you know, everything has been properly mitigated. In this case, the developer has installed a stormwater detention basin, a four bay catch basins, infiltration trenches, just a plethora of stormwater management, best management practices. And so having, and you'll have the opportunity to hear from the designer himself, but we did take a look at how they were mitigating and the additional impervious surfaces that showed up between your last approval and what was actually built will be properly mitigated through the stormwater facilities that have been installed on the property. There was enough allowance in the design of the trenches to provide for, for that additional stormwater impervious surface runoff. So we're okay with the way that it has been constructed with the qualifications. Jeff already announced that that is that the the gutters need to be attached to the infiltration systems. And otherwise, we should be okay.
All right, good. So you're you're comfortable with it? And then, from staff's perspective, you would wait for a final approval from Paul or from engineering before issuing a CO?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'll go to the, I'll go to the. Okay. All right, I'll go to the board. Anybody have any comments or questions? Dylan?
I don't have any comments.
Kate?
So, there was, so, for Paul, have you had a chance to check out everything? Because that was something that Jeff had mentioned that you did, had not inspected things?
No, the engineering inspector did not inspect the infiltration system, which is a structure installed in the ground. We were not notified in advance, as was required specifically. This is primarily the reason we couldn't give you a letter saying everything was copasthetic. But we did get some photographs, not unlike the images we received from the other lot on this subdivision. So, we did not, my inspector did not physically inspect the infiltration system that was installed. Those are the, you know, the cul-de-sac style infiltration systems that go in the ground.
And do you still need to review calculations and such based on the new, whatever it is, impervious surface amount?
I, we talked at length with the designer, Matt Hammer, and we confirmed from the previously submitted stormwater calculations that there was enough allowance in the trenches that are on the property already to account for the increase in impervious surfaces. Of course, always being aware of performance on these things. So, if, you know, three of the neighbors are flooded every time it rains, then we'll have to revisit this. But according to the calculations, which are simply that, they are only calculations, they've not endured the test of time with, you know, an eight-inch rain event, we'll have to pay attention to that. But for now, the allowance in the infiltrator trenches that you see on the plan before you now, around the edges of the driveway, along the property lines, appear to be adequate. And I'll, you can ask that question directly to Matt Hammer, who's here.
Okay, so, so it's basically, you have a punch list of things that have to be finished?
Just the connection of the, the connection of the storm gutter, the gutters, the roof gutters to the infiltration system is what I'm mainly concerned about. I, and I'll let Jeff speak, or Rebecca speak, to other issues that might be outstanding here.
Paul, that's our concern as well.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great. Bob?
With the late-breaking correspondence we received this afternoon, there just seemed to be a few questions regarding what the total amount of impervious surface is. And I guess my question really is directed to Paul Sterrett and staff. And is he confident we now have an accurate assessment of that impervious surface? I am confident that the study will show, bear out if that's, that is the correct amount. I just want to make sure we have the correct amount of impervious surface calculated, and we have confidence that it's complete.
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. I recommend that these questions be directed not to the engineering department, because we did not design this project. We didn't, we didn't affix the engineering stamp to the plan for this project. That was done by others. Others are present here this evening, and it would be good to get them on the record to answer Bob's question.
Okay. I'll go to Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying. So, there was some additional impervious surfaces added to the plan. We've accounted for all of those in the calculation, which is in the upper left of the drawing. In red, though, in the left-hand side is total impervious area. And we've also included the pool with that impervious area, because we know that the pool, the water that's hitting the pool is not recharging into the property as well.
All right, I'm comfortable that, you know, between engineering, you know, getting the final approval, once the gutters are attached, and then, you know, that CO being a contingent upon that, you know, I'm comfortable allowing staff to run that project. Is there a directive, any other thing from the board? Is there a directive needed to staff?
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Dan Pasquale. I represent the Bucheys. And I just wanted to ask a question. I know that you mentioned earlier that your next meeting isn't until August 3rd. It sounds like this is something that staff can handle. And what we would ask, because the Bucheys are anxious to complete this process and get into the house, is that you would delegate to staff the authority to sign off on the CFO prior to the next meeting, provided that the conditions are satisfied.
Yeah, that's what I was just asking staff about. So...
That was our intent, Mr. Chair, is that if you're amenable to this approach, we won't sign off until engineering is fully satisfied. But we wouldn't wait for another meeting. We're asking for your blessing now to do that. And there may be a question from the audience. I'll check with Matt or Rebecca, if you're taking public comment.
Someone raising their hand?
I do have a question. Darren, hold on one second. All right. Mr. Campbell, I'm trying to unmute you, if you can hear me. You need to do it yourself, or Matt Salem, I need to unmute him, too.
I'm now unmuted.
Okay, go ahead.
Dear members of the board, I guess I'll direct my question towards you, but it's more geared towards engineering. I just, I'm just confused. I understand that there should be tolerances for certain items, but the plan that the board approved was for 8,161 square feet of impervious surface. As to date, this is at a little over 12,000 square feet of impervious surface. That's a 50% increase, and it does not include all of the pool patio, the fire pit area, and the concrete slabs that we had referenced in our letter. So, I'm just a little confused as to how a approved plan has an increased 50% currently, is the system was designed for a 50% tolerant.
I'll go to Mr. Hammer. Did you confirm, are those numbers roughly accurate, 8,000 or 12,000?
Yes, yes, they are accurate. Again, as we described, there was an additional terrace added to the plan. We've included the pool area, which is just over 1,000 square feet to that calculation. There's been some additional walkways. And the, there was an additional gazebo added to the plan. So, there has been some additional impervious surfaces added to the plan from what was originally approved.
Right. So, you're saying you're attesting that the system as designed for that planned 8,000 square feet of impervious can handle the 12,000 square feet?
That's correct. And we'll provide something to the town engineering to support that.
Then, coinciding with that, though, a subsequent question that I think a stormwater management study needs to occur for is if you look on the as-built, I don't know if anybody had noticed it, but on the top right-hand corner, there's the current tree line, the way it exists. And if you look probably about, you know, a half an inch or inch below that, you can see the previously installed hay bales, which if you look on the approved plan, that was the additional tree line. So, there's been, I don't know, a rough guess of another quarter acre of trees cleared that was not approved for the plan. So, I just don't see how you could approve another occupancy without knowing the stormwater management calculations with this additional clearing.
Right. So, I'll ask, go back to Mr. Hammer, was that additional cleared area taken into account as well?
That's correct.
So, to my understanding, Mr. Hammer, the stormwater management system that the board previously approved, you anticipated this clearing happening and anticipated those numbers in your calculations?
So, the limit of clearing that was originally approved is generally the same limit of clearing that's on this plan. It's just the internal items within that limit of clearing have been modified, and that those additional items that were, that were added to the plan were, have been accommodated by the drainage system that was designed.
Okay. I mean, my last comment for the board would be, I mean, I'm not sure if any of you had the opportunity to read the letter, but, you know, as I letter had stated, the applicants themselves have been before you with allegations of drainage issues on Hummingbird Lane. I think approving occupancy without satisfying the conditions of their own stormwater management permit would just be premature without actually seeing the numbers of all the impervious surfaces and knowing that the additional tree clearing that wasn't approved isn't going to affect this already overburdened some project.
Well, I think the, well, nothing is per the original plan. So, the original plan happened, it was disregarded, additional trees were cleared. That's when the additional stormwater management system was, was put in place. So, you know, then subsequent to that, we've got the additional impervious surface. So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to rely on, you know, Mr. Hammer as a professional engineer attesting to that system accommodating all of that additional clearing and impervious surface. And it seems to me that, and I'll go to Paul Sterrett, but he seems comfortable with Mr. Hammer's calculations as well. And as, you know, as Paul has talked about before, this is definitely performance-based. So...
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Again, Paul Sterrett, Town Engineer. I think to, to understand the concerns of the, and I missed the name and address of the previous speaker. I understand it to be Mr. Campbell, but, you know, to appreciate his concerns with the residents who have all expressed their concerns about flooding in the neighborhood, that certainly is, we share that concern. And so, we rely upon the calculations of the designer, who has presented to us in writing the information we need to review and agree with mathematically that this will not happen. But again, if, you know, we're, we have residents getting flooded out on a regular basis every time it rains, well, the designers will have to revisit the issues and correct them. But so far, the hydro cad analysis that we've been given showing us the, the time concentrations and the appropriate connections to all of the various stormwater facilities, our best management practices, all appear to be appropriate on paper.
I guess my question is this, too, for, for engineering and Mr. Hammer. You know, say, you know, a year down the road, no pun intended, you know, there's a big storm event, there's a big rain event, and, you know, there's a bunch of water pouring out onto, you know, Loston Road. Is there a way to find out the source of that? Is it, is it because, you know, one lot's, you know, system isn't working properly, or can we pinpoint more that it's to lot two versus lot one? And it's just a general question.
Well, yeah, and I, and I'll let Matt answer that as well, but I will tell you that we should expect sometime over the summer, maybe three events, that will give us eight inches of rain in a half hour, or five inches of rain in a half hour, and the whole town of Westford is going to flood. And we're going to get puddles on every street, on every corner of town, and roads will be shut down, and we'll bring out our detour signs like we do every summer when we get these major events. But the designer is not burdened with preventing flooding during every rain event that ever occurs. We choose for them specific rain events of a particular frequency, the 20-year, the 100-year rain event. And they've shown us that during those normal average rain events, that this system is going to be adequate. But there will be, and everyone should know this, there will be rain events that will likely occur this summer, typically in the month of August, where everything is going to flood. And there's nothing we can do about that unless every drain pipe that we build in the town of Westford is 36 feet in diameter. It's just the reality. So, we only design for certain events. And I think that the designer has done that in this case.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Chairman, this is Dan Pasquale, again.
Question with respect to Mr. Campbell's letter. And it really is by getting, probably directed to Matt Hammer, the best of anybody. But I'm trying to understand, in the area of the pool cabana, the envelope that's shown there, is that envelope that's shown on the as-built diagram simply the structure? Or does it also include these pads? Because I'm having a hard time locating on that as-built. The two pads that are shown in the photo of page two of Mr. Campbell's and Mrs. Campbell's letter of today. And that is the pad to the rear of the cabana, and the pad that's on the Hummingbird side, street, street side portion of the cabana.
Yes. So, Mr. Schaefer, last Thursday or Wednesday, I spoke with Jeremy Downs, the Town Engineer. We knew that this was an inter, you know, the full extent of the patio had not been completed. So, we went out to the site on Thursday and located those additional items, that concrete pad behind the cabana, the patio area around the pool, and the walkway that connected to where the walkway had ended on the previous plan. We had surveyed that on Thursday, and Friday, updated an as-built plan today, and sent that over to the engineering department today for their review to see a complete as-built, showing the total impervious on the property.
Can I, can I ask you what the number now is for total impervious at this time?
Yeah, the total impervious, which does include the pool, I should add, is 14,571 square feet. And when we designed the original drainage system to accommodate these modifications, we had designed that system for 14,803 square feet. So, it was slightly less than what we had designed for.
So, you didn't build that, you didn't design that system for 8,000 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, anything else on the board? I think we're at a point where probably ask staff to administratively handle the issuing of the CO contingent upon engineering's sign off on the remaining pieces for the drainage.
I'm happy to make that motion. Like, I'm just assuming that the engineering department is going to do the due diligence as well as they usually do. And I've put my faith in them, that they're the truthkeepers. So, I move that we direct, let's see, that we authorize the planning department to sign off for the certificate of occupancy for to Hummingbird Lane, where the as-built plan is inconsistent with the approved Where the ASBIL plan is inconsistent with the approved plan. After, uh, engineering has signed off on, on, on the plan and all other issues have been, any other issues have been resolved.
You have a second?
Second.
Staff, is that sufficient?
It works for us. Thank you.
Works for me too. Yep. Well, we're out there on a regular basis.
Great. Thank you. So, all right.
Yeah, because it made it sound as though there were other issues that also had to be resolved. So.
Oh, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Just, uh, because with the language, other issues, it's just left a little bit vague. And as I'm sure you're aware, there are issues between the Campbells and the Buches. I'm concerned that, you know, from, and I'm not going to take you down a long road here. I know you've had a long night.
This is not relating to other issues. This is simply relating to the certificate of occupancy once the drainage issues have been satisfied. And, you know, we're
I, I did say other issues because there was, I had asked about a punch list. That there, there might be other things that had to be finished before the town can uh, sign off on the occupancy. It's not just stormwater drainage.
Well, and, and my understanding from Mr. Sterrett and from staff was that it was really just the gutters that they were concerned about. And um, that was the only remaining issue.
That was a major issue with my
I, I guess, here's, here's my take on this. If they want us to direct town staff, then the direction we'll give town staff is to, you know, sign off on the CNO once all issues that are, you know, holding that matter up from being addressed. If the applicant would prefer to come back in front of us in August because they think it's the only thing outstanding is attaching the stormwater drains to the, the wells or the dry wells or, or the, the stormwater management system. Then we can be more precise with the language, but we're probably going to continue.
Right.
I mean, we certainly want you to delegate to staff. It's, I'm trying to avoid having this process be dragged out as I'm sure you can appreciate. Um, and I'm happy to, to, you know, address these, these issues with, with Mr. Sterrett or whoever, with Mr. Hammer. Um, because we, you know, we're, we're sure that Mr. Hammer's already done the analysis. There's, there's not any net increase in stormwater from this. My, my concern is just what we heard from Mr. Campbell tonight, raising issues that really don't have anything to do with this, but seem to be more posturing for other issues between these parties. So I understand, Mr. O'Connor, you know, we certainly do want you to delegate, um, and, and we'll work with staff to get this over the finish line.
I mean, normally it, it doesn't come to us for the, uh, uh, certificate of occupancy, but because of this special situation, it is before us. And I just want to make sure that the normal process is, um, followed in addition to resolving the issue with the stormwater.
Right.
Yeah. So it's pretty simple. So the reason we're here for you tonight is to simply have the ability to sign off relative to your jurisdiction of the stormwater management permit. And so we're just relying on engineering to make sure that that last item is resolved and they are satisfied that, you know, big picture drainage is, is adequate. For all the other items that fall under our review of CFO, it's unaffected by what we're asking from you tonight. We still have to hold them to the same requirements as any certificate of occupancy request. We don't lose that.
Right.
Uh, but if I rephrase, but that, uh, the, I redirect staff that they can go forward with the process for this issuing the certificate of, um, occupancy once engineering signs off on the stormwater.
Issues. Okay. I'm happy with that.
So I'm happy with the certificate of occupancy at this time. But I want to point out that based upon the numbers that, uh, Mr. Hammer just presented, uh, I calculate there's only about two hundred and thirty three square feet of excess capacity at this time between the fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy one of actual impervious surface and a system capacity of fourteen thousand eight hundred and four. And I just want to make that on the record because, um, you know, there are certain things that in a year from now, residents of Westford are allowed to put in by right. That's the equivalent to two garden sheds that are ten by ten. And so it, it really, we have a special situation here where, you know, a couple more impervious surfaces appear uh, in a year from now, and that capacity is gone. And so I just want to make that point.
Okay. Thanks. I think again, it goes back to the, uh, it's a performance based system. And if there's, if they're adding additional structures, well, that system's not going to be able to handle it.
Yep.
So. All right. So we have a motion, a revised motion from Kate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of, uh, directing staff to administer the, or administratively uh, handle the certificate of, certificate of occupancy, please say aye. Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
I say aye. All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
All right. Which brings us to general business item E. Discussion regarding potential additional zoning by law amendments, including but not limited to authorizing drive-throughs for restaurant facilities, which currently are not allowed in Westford. So, uh, I know that our former planning board member, Gary Lovell, had requested this as a discussion item. You know, potentially limited to specific zones in town, but, um, I'll go to staff for, for an intro here.
Sir Darren, this is Jeff again. Um, as you mentioned, Gary Lovell had asked, um, that the board, planning board consider, um, potentially sponsoring, um, such as zoning by law amendment, particularly given the ongoing COVID situation. And so one of the possibilities was to authorize drive-throughs for restaurants, perhaps by virtue of special permit through a planning board process. And it indeed might make sense to limit that opportunity to districts found along, uh, say Littleton Road, Commercial Highway and any appropriate industrial district. And so what we're trying to figure out from you folks, do you think this is something that you would like to pursue? Because if so, we would have to start, uh, preparing, um, some modest draft language for your consideration when we have the other public hearings move forward. And I think, uh, Mr. Schaffer, was it during, I'm not sure if it was during your candidate's night, but you had also, uh, I think touched upon that subject. So I'm curious to hear what the board has to say.
I'll go to the board. I'll stop, I'll start with Buck.
Yeah. So, um, certainly I had raised the topic of the drive-through restaurants. You know, we had visited that through a, uh, a, a bylaw amendment that got rejected back in ninety eight at town, at annual town meeting. But there are other things. I think the, um, the drive-through restaurants, it, it, I think it's important. I think we've got residents that are concerned for their health, concerned for their families. And I don't think this is going to go away anytime soon. Even if a vaccine comes out in the next year, I think people right now are very concerned about health and safety and social distancing. And I think we owe it to our residents to try to look out for their mental wellbeing as well as their physical health. But more importantly, I think, um, we have to forecast that there's probably going to be a, a number of business failures in town. So we're going to have a number of, uh, change of use applications coming before us in the, in the coming months and years. And, um, so what I was looking at were things like not just the drive-through windows, because I think there's very few facilities right now that are really set up to handle that. Uh, that's going to require reconfiguration and, and investment on their part. But more importantly are things like curbside pickup, uh, social distancing design for entry and egress, uh, layout of facilities. And the only thing I'm suggesting I, is that I think we really would be prudent for us to include in the language of the zoning by law, these new review parameters so that we have the legal ability to request this information. Now I could share with you in writing later, but I did do a cursory review of the, the, the bylaws over the last couple of days. And I identified outside of the issue of the drive-through window, which I think is going to be a separate section. I found five, four areas in the, uh, bylaws that we should look at. And one probably most important, but in section five, one with respect to off-street parking regulations, I, I was made a note that we might want to add a section five dot one nine for curbside pickup standards. And this would be defining the types of curbside pickup spaces. Basically there's two types, straight in, which would be the preferred or curb parallel. I'm thinking curb parallel, something like in front of Karma. Uh, straight in is something like in front of Aviva today. Uh, we would have to look at the safety concerns for pedestrian flow and parking lot access in this area. And have to look at signage. The second section is section six dot four five, which is the, um, uh, PCD and PID, uh, applications. And specifically, um, look at modifying the language in number nineteen to add curbside pickup areas, uh, in that area for the application. In section nine, three A, there is special permit performance standards for, uh, major commercial projects and major retail projects. And, uh, specifically looking under nine, three, A, four, six, which is the standards for pedestrian and vehicular access and traffic management, might consider adding placement of curbside pickup areas under that section of the bylaws. And lastly, the most important section, I think, is looking at nine, four, seven for site plan approvals and site plan review and, and just looking at incorporating uh, some additional language that would look at social distancing, pedestrian flow control with respect to entry and exit and social distancing at that point. Uh, incorporation of curbside pickup areas, incorporation of outside dining spaces. Um, and I'm looking to the Board of Health to work with it here, but looking at the touchable surfaces, minimizing touchable surfaces. And, um, you know, you can kind of look at that if we can work with safety in terms of how your doors open and close so that, um, they can be almost hands-free opening of doors. Uh, whether you can use your knee or something. And lack, lastly, looking at surfaces and their ease of sanitization and the ease of that. So that was just my first cursory review of the bylaws and four areas that I found that I thought we should consider. And I think they would address many of the health concerns of our residents.
All right. Thanks. Uh, so, um, so we have six amendments that we were already proposing for the next town meeting in the fall. Yeah, I guess I'll go to, I'll go to the rest of the board to kind of see what everybody's appetite is as far as, you know, how many, how many amendments we want to sponsor. Um, yeah, uh, I'm
I'll, I'll take a stab. I, I appreciate the enthusiasm and I and there are a lot of areas in our bylaws that need to be reviewed. Uh, I think, Bob, it would be worth it for you to, to put it in writing. And what we've done in the past is when we have the time, we do review priority. We have a priority list and we could add them in and, and rank them relative to other proposed bylaw changes as to which ones to work on now and which ones are nice to have when we have the time. I'm, I'm concerned about some of them. I think some of the things you propose are really more germane for the Board of Health and not the planning board. I don't think uh, architectural design is necessarily an area that we want to get into as the planning board. Even, I know other towns are, do a lot of that. I, I don't think it would go over well in Westford. Um, as for the, the drive-through one, I think that's worth revisiting. And I think it would be worth it if staff dusted off the proposed bylaw that we presented to town town meeting before, it might be that, uh, with a few tweaks that that would be good, that that would be good to present again. Um, anything that requires significant new work, such as some of the other things you said, such as the, the curbside picking pickup and such that require a lot of additional thought and are pretty new concepts. I think, uh, I think would not be good for a fall town meeting, but maybe at a later date. But I, I think dusting off the one that would, the, um, the drive-through one that we had before is worth, worth pursuing.
I, I think so. I agree. Yeah. Especially since that one was already, we've got a basis there. I'd love to see the language on that. And if we can use that as kind of a a basis, we can, we can have a discussion around that. Um, you know, Bob, I appreciate the, the, you know, the addition. I think that's something we should consider. Not sure necessarily for this, the fall town meeting. But I think they're all good points. So I'll go to the rest of the board. Dylan?
Uh, I agree with what you just said, Darren, and, and what Kate said earlier. I mean, I think, um, Bob, that was quite a list. I, I really appreciate you, you know, digging in, you know, so quickly and offering some, what I think would be very sensible. Um, I law amendments that, that would help restaurants in particular right now, uh, have some guidelines on how to, you know, structure their operation to survive in, in what is the, the new normal state as we're all learning to live with COVID. And I agree that that this situation could be one that is with us for some time. Um, on the topic of, uh, you know, uh, drive-throughs, I was not, I don't even know if I was in town when that was originally shot down. So I really only heard that it was essentially an effort to uh, mitigate or minimize the amount of traffic on and off of four ninety five for people to, you know, swing off and pick up food. I agree with a comment that Bob made. In thinking about like the logistics of drive-through in Westford, I can really only think of one, maybe two restaurants that today would even be able to pull it off with the footprint that they have. Um, and where they're located. You know, you think of some of the common restaurants that you go to, like dunks and things like that. And, and I don't even think they could pull that off in that corner spot that they are in that plaza. I don't know where you would have somebody drive, drive through. Um,
McDonald's.
Yeah. McDonald's is the one that I can think of and unarguably Chili's is configured, but, but they don't really do that per se. Right? So, um, uh, so I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering how, how much help it actually provides. But the flip side of that is in thinking about it, and I'll, I'll try to wrap up because it's getting late. Um, I just think in general for new businesses, it, it's a little bit, uh, I guess antiquated of a notion to not allow drive-throughs. And I think it would put restaurants in Westford at a bit of a competitive disadvantage just from the get-go against restaurants in other towns. So in general, I would, I would favor us putting forward an amendment to allow drive-throughs in certain, certain parts, uh, certain districts.
Yeah.
And it might be some of the restaurants, if it's there, they might decide that they want to move their location or something.
Right.
And that it's more amenable to drive.
Right.
Okay. Mike, Dylan, Mike?
Uh, I would agree. I think it's antiquated that we don't have drive-throughs. Um, I think it should be an option for restaurants that they want to do it through special permit applications in specific districts. So I think it definitely is something we should revisit.
All right. So Jeff, are you comfortable or staff comfortable kind of pulling out that language that we that we originally had or that planning board had before? And then we can kind of use that as a jumping off point for discussion.
Yeah. I mean, we can certainly, uh, take that language, but what I'm hearing, it sounds like special permit. I'm assuming planning board, uh, which is typical to the other drive-through. And then I think we would take a look at what districts make sense from what I'm hearing, and it probably will match what might have been in place all those years ago. So we'll find that language. We'll see if we have any suggested tweaks and just put it to the board and see what your, uh, what your thoughts are.
Thanks.
It also, there is other opportunities, like say, um, there could be a couple of other restaurants that it might be feasible, but then you also got to think of, as Bob suggested, turnover. So, you know, what might be a bank today could be a restaurant or, or something, you know, down the road that has that opportunity and for new construction as well. So.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah. The other thing I should have said was, um, I did attempt to see if there were other Massachusetts communities looking at this, and I couldn't find any. But I, the next step would be to reach out to staff and see if we can use the, the planning community step would be to reach out to staff and see if we can use the planning community to help us identify anybody who might be drafting zoning bylaws with respect to pandemic parameters. The other thing I would add, though, is the language I was looking at, for the parameters I was looking at, was fairly simple. It was simply adding in review parameters that would allow us to legally ask for certain information as part of the change of use, site plan review process. You know, I did find four areas, but they were pretty significant. But my recollection, having been at town meeting for the drive-through restaurant, that was a fairly significant bylaw. And that's going to require, that there is a pretty significant chunk of language that was crafted for that. And I do want to point out that I am in favor of looking at that. But remember, it was crafted by a petitioner, and specifically, that petitioner was a commercial petitioner who used local residents to sponsor it. So, we are going to have to look at that very closely to make sure that it represents our best interests.
And also, what neighboring towns have for similar language?
Yeah. And my suggestion here is.
As well. I can ask NIMCOG about, if there's any sort of, if they have any feeling for towns looking at any pandemic-related bylaw changes.
Yeah. And my recommendation, we probably need to put like a tiger team special committee together to try to look at it together before the third. Run an open, we can run an open meeting and run an open session, but it's going to require some collaboration to get this ready in time for the third.
Well, but you know, drive-throughs are drive-throughs for whatever purpose you want to call it, for pandemic purposes, other people could say for convenience, childcare, whatever. Maybe there's a kind of a template that MCAG has, that, you know, a standardized, I don't know, something that we can use to help us draft it.
Yeah, is that?
You're asking him, Darren.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting this month, but I can send a note over. Cool. All right. So, Jeff, is that, Jeff and Rebecca, is that kind of help along those lines? We can at least use that as a format. And then, you know, if it's overwhelming and we can't get it in for the fall, then we can, we'll probably realize that, but.
Well, this could be a very.
Well, then we can do it.
Yeah, but the drive-through component, that could be a very simple amendment, and it might not need any real significant language changes. It could just be simply amending the table of uses. Right now, it says drive-throughs accepting restaurants. We could, it could be as simple as removing accepting restaurants.
Right, okay.
Or adding it as a new one if we didn't, if we wanted to specify zoning districts. It could be a light lift in terms of rewriting, but we'll look at it.
Okay, good.
Right.
All right, cool. Anything further on that, folks? All right. So, that brings us to general business item F. So, board reorganization and appointments.
Can I, if I may start, if you don't mind. I've enjoyed my first year of the board. I would at some point like some petition, position in leadership, but it's not time for me yet. I'm still learning. I don't know, Darren, if you're interested in keeping on as chair, but you would have my vote. And Dylan, I'd like to see you as vice. No offense to Kate, but I'd like to see, you know, some new, some new blood in there. Those are my recommendations and thoughts.
I second the recommendation. I, so.
Thanks, Mike.
I am happy to give, I am happy to give up leadership and let somebody else take over. So, Aaron, if you are amenable, I would move that we reappoint Darren as chair for the following. And I would also move that we appoint Dylan as vice chair, if he's amenable.
My second.
Oh. First off, we should find out if Darren is willing to accept the nomination.
Well, since Kate did.
Yes, I believe.
Yeah, since Kate did, I believe, before I did. So, I think, yeah, I think, you know, before her, Mike did a couple of years too. So, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn it down. I wouldn't nominate myself, but I wouldn't turn it down.
And our charter says you can't be, you can't go for a third term. So, you're, you're off the hook next year.
Term limits. What's that? All right. So, do we need a motion, or do we need a vote?
I think you have a motion. And you accepted it, Darren. I just don't, before you vote, I guess, are there any other, would there be any other nominations for chair? I don't hear anything.
All right.
You've done a great job, so keep it up.
Oh, thanks, Kate. So, all right, all those in favor of, can I do it at once? Me as, well, I guess all those in favor of me repeating as chair, say aye. Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Buck?
Aye.
I abstain. Then, all those in favor of Dylan becoming vice chair, say aye. Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Buck?
Aye.
Dylan?
I'll abstain.
All right, cool.
Long as you don't say no.
I don't, I won't say no. I appreciate the confidence, all of you. Thank you.
That's cool. All right, good. All right. Do we need to appoint committee stuff and all that stuff tonight too, Jeff?
I do need Darren to, to, I think, get the nomination from everybody to rejoin CPC. I was emailed this week saying that my, my term is up. So, I need to be, I need to know if the board would like me to continue on as our representative to CPC, or if we would like to have a discussion about that.
Would you?
I'm willing to do it. I'm willing to do it. But if somebody is highly interested in joining that, that committee, I'm, I guess I'm not wedded to it.
All right.
So, what do we have? We have MCAG, CPC.
Sidewalk. Sidewalk.
You're on the side, we have the sidewalk, there's the new Stormwater one. Are there any other committees we're supposed to be on?
I think those are the active ones, those four. And so, Stormwater, Dylan just got appointed to the, I forget what it's called, but that was recent.
Committee.
Yes. And so, and this is also an opportunity, by the way, just because someone, someone's term hasn't expired, it's still an opportunity if folks want to, you know, jigger the responsibilities around if, say, they've assumed other duties. So, I mean, it's not indentured servitude if, you know, commitments have changed and such, except for the chair, of course. So, if someone has a term and they want to let it go, it's an opportunity as well.
Well, along those lines, again, I am the Pedestrian Safety Committee, and it unfortunately does seem to meet at the same time as the Hockey Association that I'm the president of. So, I haven't been able to actively been to too many meetings. So, if somebody would be interested in stepping in those shoes, I know I joke about it, but I don't think that I'm giving it as much as I possibly could. It changes, but it's usually Wednesday night.
Well, all right. So, I was going to suggest, I've been on NIMCOG for a while. So, if anybody wants to do that, I'm more than happy to let someone do it. You know, I'm just, I've been recently appointed again for another term, so I'm happy to do that. But that's Wednesday nights as well.
I'm, I'm happy doing the pedestrian. I did it before. So, I haven't been on a committee for a while.
All right. So, Dylan, you want to stay on CPC?
Yeah, I can do that one. And I mean, the Stormwater one, I already volunteered for, so I'm good with those.
Okay.
Unless Bob, unless Bob, Bob, unless you're looking for one. Your dance card looks open.
Who has more travel?
Bob, are you interested in the Storm or the CPC, or any of them, any of them?
I'm flexible on that. I mean, I certainly have the background with CPC. But yeah, I can handle.
Learn all the updates.
Hmm? What?
Learn how CPC has been updated. CPA has been updated since you were on it.
Oh, just, just a little.
Yeah, I don't know.
Up to Dylan.
NIMCOG. Dylan, you've got CPC and Stormwater, got Sidewalk, or pedestrian.
Yeah. No, I don't have pedestrian.
Kate does.
I have pedestrian.
The thing about CPC is it's very heavy between, you know, at the end of the year, as you're getting, usually as you're getting ready for the March town meeting. You know, you're doing a lot of stuff during winter time, and then it, yeah. And then it slows down. And then I don't know what to expect on the Stormwater one, because we just agreed to do it. And then I think it's really going to be as needed based upon, you know, feedback from folks when they get, when they get their first assessed bill.
Right.
So, neither of them are that burdensome. I'm okay keeping them if, if, if that's the will of the board.
All right.
We can, Bob, work on zoning bylaw amendments.
That's, yeah, exactly.
That might be a new, that might be a new subcommittee or something. So, that could be good.
Yep.
All right.
Well, in the past, in the past, what we did was that went to Master Plan.
Wow.
Master Plan, which did zoning bylaws for a while.
There might be a spot for you on, if that gets reenacted too, so we activate. All right. So, I think we're all good there, right? So, Dylan, do you need official vote or anything like that? Jeff, or?
Yes, the vote, please.
All right.
I move that we.
Go ahead, Kate.
I move that we reappoint Darren to MCAG, Dylan to CPC and Stormwater, and Kate, we appoint to pedestrian, and also alternate for Stormwater.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Buck?
Aye.
All right, cool. Cool. Minute. All right. So, that brings us to our review of minutes from June 1st. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I can.
All right. Any discussion? Dylan?
It looked good to me.
All right, Kate?
Good to me.
Mike?
Good to me.
All right, looked good to me as well. Bob, I assume you'll abstain from that one?
That's correct.
All right. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes for June 1st, say aye. Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Buck?
Abstain.
All right. All right. Now, we, Kate, you want to do the honors of moving us into executive session?
Or? I don't think I got instructions on the login. Is there another different login?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, we'll forward that to you now, Mike. Does everyone else have it?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay, I'll forward it.
I move, I move that we executive session to discuss strategy with respect to a possible appeal by the planning board of the decision of the zoning board of appeals to grant a variance for the property located at 0 and 37 Carlisle Road, as an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation, litigating position of the planning board, and that the planning board will reconvene in public session for the sole purpose of adjourning after the executive session.
Second. All right, all those in favor, Dylan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye, Buck?
Aye.
All right. See you guys in a few. I'm going to take a bio.
Five-minute break.
What's that?
Five-minute bio?
Yeah, good.
Perfect.
All righty.
See you guys in the other meeting.
Cool.